Right, it is 7:02 and I apologies, 7:02 and I'd like to call the meeting to order noting that Councilmember Als is joining us remotely. Let's start with
Mayor, we're going to go ahead and go through the script with Councilmember Als to ensure the
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So just prior to roll call, as noted by the mayor, Councilmember Als is participating remotely pursuant to the Brown Act and is participating from Dakota Dunes Country Club, 960 South Dakota Dunes Boulevard in Dakota Dune, South Dakota, participating by Zoom webinar. And I just wanted to note for the record that in accordance with the Brown Act, the teleconference location was noted on the agenda for this evening's meeting. And I also would note for the record that we have a quorum of councilmembers present tonight in person. So now I just want to go through a few items with Councilmember Als to confirm compliance. Councilmember Als, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, and were you able to hear the proceedings up until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting?
I do.
Great, and have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes.
And is the, is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if they wish to do so?
Yes.
And is there any member of the public there with you now?
No.
Okay, great. And I can hear Councilmember Als clearly, any concerns from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'd just like to advise the council that for this evening, due to teleconference participant, all votes taken tonight need to be by roll call. And on that note, the town clerk may now proceed with the roll call.
Councilmember Als?
Here.
Councilmember Hefte?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Here.
Mayor Wernicke?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Christine. Moving on to item number two, presentations and proclamations where we have none. Moving on to item number three, Town Manager Report. Thank you to our interim Town Manager, Corey Stoker.
Thank you, Mayor Wernicke. I'll keep it brief since we have a fulsome finance discussion tonight. I wanted to first share a reminder that Mid Peninsula Open Space will be presenting to the Town Council on October 30th at 7:30 PM. The meeting will start at seven with a few items prior to the presentation, so please tune in around 7:30 if you're just looking for that presentation. As a note, they've already presented on Monday, 10/21, the Mid Pen Open Space Hawthorns Area Plan Ad hoc Committee. So there is a recording online currently if you'd like to tune in ahead of time just to see what's coming. I did want to acknowledge our maintenance team, Justin Bixby and Scott Weber. They've been working diligently to prepare the town for each of the town events we've had prior, as well as they are now preparing us for the winter season. I did just want to acknowledge them publicly to say thank you to them for all of their hard work. And last, we do have an update from HCD regarding the housing element, and I'd like to invite Terrence Grindal, our interim planning and building director, just to give us a brief update.
Terrence?
Yeah, so, yes, so Mayor and Council. We did, we did finally receive a letter from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. They call this letter a technical assistance letter, but it really is a requirement that we're, that we, that we need to achieve before we can have our housing element recertified. The, 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 the letter includes two issues, one of which is relatively straightforward. One is, the, the straightforward issue is that the language that's in the housing element that describes mixed use zoning, that 50%, that, that at least 50% of the floor area is housing and up to 100% can be. That's already in our housing element, but they, they are requiring that that be placed into the zoning code. The, the more the more challenging requirement is that they want to see us complete some sort of, some sort of zoning or guarantee that the, that the, sorry, that the Dorothy Ford site could be developed by right. By right means without any further land use entitlement. Effectively, this means that the site would need to be zoned for high density, for the, the the density of housing units that were indicated in the, in the, in the general plan, housing element. However, even if this were to occur, the site is owned by the town and no actual development of the site could, could not, could occur. Even if by right development was available, unless the Town Council took future proactive action to sell, lease the site or try to find a developer. The staff is, staff is suggesting that in, in the near future, the Town Council consider this issue and consider ways to address the, the technical assistance letter that we received from HCD. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions from the council? Go for it.
Thanks for the update. If we were to zone Dorothy Ford open space park, whatever we've finally given its name. Normally, once you zone something, it's very difficult to sort of change its zoning because you've given the owner certain rights and to take those rights away is difficult. In this case, if we were to zone it, but then find a replacement for Dorothy Ford Park as we're trying to do with the Sunrise Clause, could we then unzone it because the only, the only impacted party would be the town?
Yes, you could, and in fact, you could do it on the same night as you designated the new, the new site.
Okay, great, so if, if we decide to go down that path and zone it for low income housing, we could, in the future, if we found a replacement for it, we could unzone it.
That's correct, but I would want to point out since the town attorney is here, that we would have to go through the procedures, proper procedures of noticing and, and so on and so forth, but yes, you could.
Good, thank you.
Is this a two-step process with the Planning Commission as well as the Town Council?
That's correct.
That's it, just the two?
The
Two public hearings?
The development, the development of the site, if it were to be developed, it would require the Town Council only to, to dispose of the site to find a developer if that were desired. The, but the rezoning of the site would require a hearing for the Planning Commission and a hearing for the Town Council.
I, so this is more a procedural question. We, this is not an agendized discussion topic. And there are clearly like dozens of questions I would have about the implications. So maybe we could talk about because I worry that answering anecdotal questions tonight might not be productive if we don't have a chance to have kind of a more fulsome discussion. So what, if we can please comment on the plan for a future, can you confirm that there is a future meeting that will happen at which this will be the subject of a deeper discussion and a more fulsome Q and A?
Well, we have it on the roll forward currently for November 13th.
Right, I understand that. My point is more the public doesn't have access to the roll forward, so I'm trying to make sure the public understands that there is a future discussion. And, you know, Terrence, we are going to have a lot of questions about the implications, so I'm personally going to hold my questions until that opportunity, okay?
Yeah, and just to be clear, yes, as you know, it is planned for an upcoming meeting, the first regular agenda meeting on November 13th. So there will be a regular agenda item on this with a fulsome discussion and Q and A.
And does that mean the Planning Commission will meet and discuss this prior to that?
No, my understanding is there'll be council direction given and then if that, that would trigger the process for it to go to Planning Commission and then go back to council.
Thank you.
Thanks for the follow-up. Any other very procedural questions on this at this point? All right. Thank you, Terrence.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Any other questions or comments for Corey on the Town Manager Report? Thank you. All right, let's move on to oral communications. I would like to start with comments from those here in the schoolhouse. I have a couple of speaker cards that were submitted, so I'll just call you up by name, apologies if I butcher your pronunciation. The first one is Chris Cavigoli?
Okay, and is there like a counter at the time or anything or no? Okay, well, I'll just start. So my name is Chris Cavigioli, sounds kind of like a pasta. And my colleagues and I, we live in San Mateo County and we're volunteers with United Sovereign Americans. United Sovereign Americans or USA is a nationwide nonpartisan organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. And today we come to you as concerned citizens sharing some alarming information about our state's voter roll database. An analysis of the 2022 election researched by the, by highly qualified data teams using only official data provided by California election officials indicates some serious issues with compliance of federal law. So we are here to present to you and the public the results of that analysis showing that votes cast, counted and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and under federal law. But we're not here to cast any blame or aspersions on any elected official, nor do we advocate for overturning or rerunning any past election. So why are we here? This resolution demands an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections. It includes a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. So your written copy that we gave you cites the US Supreme Court precedents and federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. So what we're asking is, we urge you to carefully read it and put this resolution on the agenda for the next city council meeting where you can vote to join us in support for fair, honest and valid elections. So what I've been saying is that, you know, it's not controversial to obey the law, so that shouldn't be a big deal. And we're just asking for you to join us in standing for doing things right, righteously. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next is Bob.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to talk. Resolution for a legally valid 2024 general election. Whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections. Whereas it is the duty of our elected officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate, National Voter Registration Act, 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters. US Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than one in 125 ballots in error by the voting system. That's the Help America Vote Act, 2002. Whereas the analysis of the California 2022 general election, again, using the Secretary of State data, has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appeared to violate both federal and state laws, including in excess of 5.8 million, that's million, ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database. More than 2.7 million votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations. 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them. More than 2.7 million apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. The maximum allowable system error for the 2022 general election was 90 errors. And I want to go back in about the 5.8 million ineligible or uncertain registration. With the current voter setup with mail, mail out ballots for every registry, for every record, that's 5.8 million plus ballots that were sent out for invalid or uncertain registrations. Each one of those costs approximately $10 to print, to print and mail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. Patty?
Hi, my name is Patty. Certification as defined by law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Proof of, one, proof of citizenship, identity and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Two, voter rolls certified, accurate and available for public review and challenged 30 days before the start of early voting. Three, hand-marked and secure ballots similar to currency where imaging technology is used for tabulation. The security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing and implementation. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights.
Thank you, Patty. Lisa?
I'll be including our presentation. Lisa Smith, thank you. Number six, to be continued ballots regardless of entry source, election operations and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, a national institute of standards and technology compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2 must be performed. Number eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand count and a full review of records. And number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately reported. So be it resolved that the San Mateo City Council members and Portola Valley Town City Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here. So we implore the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, California Legislature, federal legislators, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges and both Secretary of State in California and county registrars of voters to cooperate and fill these firm requests of the people. And that concludes our resolution. Please visit the United Sovereign Americans website to learn more about our organization and our goal to restore valid elections throughout our country. So that's unite, number four, freedom.com. One more time, unite for freedom.com. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other members from the schoolhouse that wish to participate in oral communications? I don't see any hands raised in the schoolhouse and so we'll go to Zoom. Rita Comas?
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I just want to start off with, you know, talking about Don Bullard. I saw a couple of the, our wonderful firemen over at Bianchini's yesterday and asked about Don and they said that there's going to be a retirement party, so I really hope that the council sends a letter of support and the town finds a way to send separate notes of support to the fire department for the wonderful work that Don Bullard, our previous fire marshal, for his retirement. And I also want to talk about the finances. You know, I've been one of those people that have been talking about the finances since 2020, asking about the, the year-end reports and the
Rita, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is on the agenda for tonight, so if this is regarding town finances, you should hold your public
Well, I, I have, I have looked at the, I've looked at the agenda and I have been asking for a full copy of the draft of the current audit and I have not found it. I found the old copy of it, but I believe at one of the last town council meetings, we were told that it was going to be updated. Yourself and another council member had, you know, approved it ahead of seeing that final draft and the residents have been asking for the final draft. And I hope that we have the ability to see the final draft of the 2021 audit before it is then approved by, by the council. So if, if that can be posted someplace, and I'm also very surprised about this letter from HCD. It is posted on the website and there have been lots of postings by people on different, this council and different committees in this town on all types of social media about what's going on in this town. But somehow this particular letter that really affects us did not get posted. So I hope that we can be proactive to our residents with the information that we need in the future, such as that HCD letter and also this particular full draft of the audit before it's approved. Thank you.
So I'm just going to make a couple of comments. One, the HCD letter is, is posted on the website and an e-notified notice from the town did go out regarding that. The 2020, 2020, 2021 audit is currently, remains in the hands of the Finance Committee. We're waiting for them to have an opportunity to move, move that item forward to the council. Yeah, so with that, I will look to see if there's any other hands raised. I don't see any in the schoolhouse or on Zoom, so I will be closing oral communications. Actually, I just saw a hand go up last minute. Kristy?
Hi, I was just wondering how many people are online and if you could give us that number? Thank you. And continually give us that number. Thank you.
We have 33 attendees. With that, I will close oral communications and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the council wishes to pull?
I would pull A, 5A.
Anyone else? Jeff, do you have anything? No. Mary or Craig? All right, I'd love to entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items five, B through F.
So moved?
Roll call, please.
Second.
Councilmember Als?
Aye.
Councilmember Hefte?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Wernicke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So on 5A, this is my recollection on page five was that we did approve of $50,000 for consultant services to backfill. My recollection, and I just suggest staff go back and confirm this is accurate, was that the $50,000 would be subject to consultation with the a subcommittee of the mayor and vice mayor. And that, I think, should be reflected if true.
I agree, that was the decision and
We can make that adjustment.
Okay. Great, then I move to approve 5A.
Is there a second?
Yes, amended.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Als?
Aye.
Councilmember Hefte?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Mayor Wernicke?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Any, you know what I'm realizing? We did not take public comment on the consent agenda. So we can do that right now. I apologize for missing that. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? I don't see any hands raised in the schoolhouse or on Zoom, so I'll close public comment on that. I apologize for that oversight. Moving on to the regular agenda. We have Tony McFarlane here to present this item, General Fund Reserve and Impacts on Current Future Budgets. Tony, before you start, are you going to give an overview of how we're going to go through the discussion or would you like me to, to do that really quick before you start? Okay, so this is kind of an agenda item that impacts two things. The 2024, the revisions to the 2024, 25 budget as well as as well as implications to that on future year budgets. And so we're going to attempt to cover the content. Tony will cover everything, but in terms of going through things, I'm going to propose that we attempt to kind of cover the twenty twenty-four budget as much as possible initially. Obviously, there's threads that connect those two topics very closely, but I want to make sure that we get clear direction to Tony on the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget and then we would proceed into more detail on the future years. So if that's acceptable to everybody.
Can you help me understand the prophecy? We're going to give Tony direction and he's going to come back with a revised, I mean, we're, I'm getting a little lost in where we are in terms of getting a revised budget.
Okay, that, that's a fair question. So Tony, do you want to take that or would you like me to? I'm happy to.
I have, I will, I have what I believe to be the revised budget for the council to review. But it's not final until the council says so. And so the council can look at what I have brought forward and they can discuss and decide that it's not enough, too much. And then give me direction on what to give.
So I'll just add to that because things have changed, you know, significantly. We didn't, we don't have a an approval item for the budget on the agenda because Tony wanted to hear from us. So he could input the final direction and then bring back a final twenty twenty-four revised budget for approval by the council. I believe that will also happen at the November thirteenth meeting.
Correct.
Obviously, we can talk through that, but that was, that's the proposed schedule.
What I'm bringing is also been part of the conversations I've been having with the finance committee in the past.
Does that help? All right.
We have about thirty-four slides and we will, basically, the first part of the conversation will be a review of the proposed budget and the revised budget, what goes into it. We'll go through each department line by line, or that's what I've done, line by line. But I will highlight the changes that were made for each department and show what the, the final outcome of the revised budget that I'm currently presenting. Part of the conversation was the general fund reserve. When we brought the preliminary budget back in June, it was a reported fund balance, beginning fund balance reserve of five point four million. As a result of what the completion of the twenty twenty-one audit, also the work of Christian Company and staff updating the twenty-one, twenty-two years, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four, I was able to update and revise the general fund reserve. And the reason the, the numbers were not updated for the preliminary budget is that the financial information was behind and there was no way to determine or count, calculate the actual revenues and expenditures at that moment.
Excuse me, Tony, is there a way to fix the right hand? Thank you.
So looking at the calculations, we had the, with the general fund reserve, as I said, we reported a five point four million dollar balance. Then then taking the ending reserve balance from fiscal year twenty twenty-one of five point one four million and then estimate, or including the estimated revenues and expenses and all three years have ended with deficits totaling three point five million. That included a, or that created an updated reserve balance of one point five eight million. As I continue to go through the prior fiscal years and looking at individual line items for the twenty-four, twenty-five revised budget, I was able to identify two items related to the sheriff's contract. We did not use our funds available in public safety grants for COPS and public safety sales tax. And that was additional three hundred twenty thousand dollars. And so I'm revising the beginning fund balance reserve for twenty-four, twenty-five at one point nine million to begin. This slide shows the proposed budget that was, or the preliminary budget that was brought to council in June. Revenues were a little bit over seven, almost seven point one million. Expenses were eight point seven million and there were transfers out of one point three million.
My fault? What else, Tony? No, it was all, sorry. All right.
Okay. So as, as the preliminary budget was proposed with the five point four million dollar fund, beginning fund balance and now revising it to one point nine million, keeping it as it is with the revenues of seven point one and the expense of eight point seven and transfers out of one point three million. The projected deficit would have been two point nine million and that would have left with the ending reserve balance of a deficit of one million dollars. Looking at the revised budgets, we're going to be eliminating the transfers out for capital projects of one point one seven, reducing expenses of one point two four million, increasing revenues of three hundred ninety-five thousand, which leaves a deficit of less than a hundred thousand dollars. There are additional salary savings that could be realized from the town engineer and building and planning director salaries as those positions are currently filled by retired annuitants. Those are part-time, but in the budget, they are full-time, fully loaded with salary benefits and other items. So if we may, do need to make some additional cuts, we can identify as we see fit. Looking at the authorized full-time equivalents, the budget for the preliminary budget included FTEs for twenty point six FTE with six in the town manager, one in town clerk, four in finance, four point two in planning, not point two of a person, it's just point two of their time. Building was one point four, point one in code enforcement and public works of four. As it stands right now, seven positions are currently vacant and frozen. Staff is currently at fourteen point five FTE and this identified a significant salary savings from these. The highlighted positions are the ones that are vacant. We currently are not filling positions unless it's essential. Essential positions are the town manager, the town clerk, town engineer and planning and building director. Those are executive level positions and every town, city, we used to have those positions filled. We are currently have those positions filled by a consultant for town clerk and the planning and building director is a retired annuitance. And the town engineer were currently in the process of filling. So looking at the individual departments, the town council, there was a, a charge in twenty-three, twenty-four of thirteen and a half, thirteen thousand five hundred, that's going to be reclassed to the non-departmental, but it's still within the general fund. But proposing no changes to the town council budget is basically for development and use. In the town committees, proposing a fifty-eight percent reduction across all committees. In looking at prior years, some committees have spent their budget, others have not. Some committees have already spent some money this year and will adjust accordingly figuring out what the rest of their year will look like. But the town, it's, we originally proposed a hundred fifteen thousand and we're revising to forty-eight thousand five hundred. Town manager, very significant, almost four hundred twenty-two thousand dollars in savings, primarily from vacant positions, one position in this with the admin analyst. That position was not fulfilled, so we have twelve months of salary savings from this one position. Also with the separation of the former town manager, including those two were recognizing salary savings of three hundred thirty-seven thousand and reduction in services of eighty-six thousand. So the proposed budget was one point four three million. The revised budget is one point zero million, which is a four hundred twenty-three thousand dollar budget. In the town clerk, the position is currently vacant, but it is being filled by a consultant. The salary savings with vacancy will be offset by the consulting costs, so that's why there's no calculation for this department. However, we have reduced services of fifty thousand. That could change based on the outcome of some of tonight's conversation. But the budget posed is a hundred ninety-seven thousand and we're revising to a hundred forty-six thousand, so it's about fifty-one thousand dollars.
Councilmember Taylor had a question. This is an update to what was in the packet. I think it's the question because it's hard to read because it's small out here.
So looking at the finance department, not proposing much changes to finance. We are currently in the process of competing for audits in the next twelve months. So we could not justify reducing consulting costs or auditing services because those tasks are very important to tonight's conversations and future dialogue about budgets. So, but the proposed budget was nine hundred twenty thousand. We are reducing development costs and some minor personnel costs of ten thousand, so it would be nine hundred ten thousand. Police services, this is our San Mateo County Sheriff's contract. For the year, it's two point three five million. We will be moving an additional ninety-five thousand dollars to COPS and public safety sales tax. And we'll also be recognizing a credit of four hundred twenty-three thousand from San Mateo County for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And next year, we have a two hundred, it's two hundred twenty thousand dollar credit for next year, but those costs are going to be going up next year and then the following. Fire services, these are for fire mitigation services provided via shared services contract with Woodside Fire and Town of Woodside. The only reduction we're going to do is with the software licensing. And so it's a ten thousand dollar reduction, but what was proposed is three hundred sixteen thousand and the revised amount is three hundred and ten. Dispatch services, no changes. The costs go up incrementally, incrementally each year. So there will be no changes to dispatch services. Planning division proposed revenues of a hundred eighteen thousand dollars, we're making no changes to those. However, the user fee study will have an impact on planning fees for the next fiscal year. The consultants that are being used or the contractors that are being used for town services, Good City does provide planner city, planner services. The housing element consultants, we're urban planning partners and LWC. We're reducing services by forty thousand. And the building and planning manager was not filled, so sixty-five percent of that salary was charged to the planning division. So those are the salary savings that are being recognized in the planning division. We are reducing miscellaneous consultants about twenty-five thousand. There was a project that's going to be deferred. And then also we're reducing some software and licensing and development use. But the expense budget is for nine hundred and forty thousand proposed, the revised amount is seven hundred and eighteen thousand. In the building division, again, we have the building, planning manager position, thirty percent of that, thirty, thirty percent of this salary was in the plant, the building division. There's a small incremental increase to permit revenue of two thousand dollars. So it went from eight hundred ninety thousand to eight hundred ninety-two thousand. The user fee study again will have an impact on building fees for twenty-five and twenty-six. Plan check services are provided by Cutzman and Associates. The building official services are provided by Good City. Inspections provided by CSG Consulting. And we think that in, for this particular department, that we should consider an RFP, consolidate all building services through one contractor and creating some economies of scale. Services have also been reduced by five. So the expense budget for this proposed was five hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred fifty-four thousand. We're revising the amount to four hundred and forty-two thousand. Code compliance, the salary savings again were from the building and planning manager position that wasn't filled, that's approximately five percent. So the budget went from forty-two thousand to thirty thousand and the thirty thousand is for code compliance services provided by CSG Consulting. I've included the customer deposits fund, even though it's separate from the general fund. This is a listing of all the fees that are paid for by applicant charges or applicant deposits. So for twenty twenty-one, approximately eight hundred sixty-four thousand dollars in services was paid for by applicant deposits. Nine hundred ninety-three thousand in twenty-one, twenty-two. We had a slight reduction in twenty-two, twenty-three of six hundred fifty-eight thousand, but rebounded in twenty-three, twenty-four to nine hundred thirty-four thousand. Again, this is just being presented for informational purposes, just to show that we do account for applicant charges in a separate fund other than each other. Community Hall. These are one of the, this is one of the departments where the revenue posting from prior years is incomplete. And that's a result due to the, the the credit card processing, online reservation system that is used. It's community plus or community pass, excuse me. And it's interfacing with our open gov system. There was significant issues in twenty-one, twenty-two that we're still catching up with and we should have them done as the audits progress. The only item that we're reducing significantly in this is deferred maintenance, ten thousand dollars. So proposed fees are unchanged, ninety-one thousand. Proposed revenue is unchanged at ninety-one thousand, but the proposed expenses are being reduced from a hundred two thousand to ninety-one. Moving on to non-departmental. Yep, those facilities. This is our public works, roads and facilities, operations. A small increase in revenue from forty-one thousand to forty-four thousand for encroachment permits. The engineer services are provided by NV five and CSG Consulting. We have a reduction of fifty-nine thousand in personnel costs and services of eighty-one thousand, mostly in software and licensing and miscellaneous consultants. There's some projects that are going to be pushed back. And so the expenses went from nine hundred and forty-three thousand to eight hundred and three thousand. So it's a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar reduction in expenses for the public. Non-departmental, this is in two parts. Non-departmental is our general revenues. We received a property tax levy letter, which the estimates provided from the county were significantly higher than what we had proposed in May and June. The numbers were just updated. So property tax secured, we're looking at a three hundred sixty-one thousand dollar increase. We've had two point eight seven nine million in the proposed budget, but the county is saying it will receive three point two four million. And that was in the levy letter. Also unsecured, we had a hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred in the proposed and that amount is being increased to a hundred and thirty-two thousand. We're increasing these amounts because these We're increasing these amounts because these are part of the teeter plan. And with the teeter plan, that that amount gets paid regardless if they collect a full amount or not. So that's why we are proposing to increase property tax. That's about three hundred seventy six thousand there. ERAP revenue and real property transfer tax, those amounts are being increased. ERAP a hundred thousand because two hundred fifty thousand is is a little bit below than what the average that we get every fiscal year. And real property transfer tax is going from one hundred to one hundred and fifty thousand, again, based on historical activity. Hundred fifty thousand is a little bit lower average. And then also in the levy letter, the Hopter, which is a Prop eight assessments. It's homeowners property tax relief, that amount went from five thousand to eight thousand two hundred forty six. So on the revenue side, proposed was five point nine million. We're revising that amount to six point four, which is a five hundred thirty thousand dollar. And then on the expense side, we've reduced the transfers out for capital projects, which will generate one point one seven million to the Here's a look at the capital projects. We're going to be deferring one point one seven million to next year's budget discussion. Could very well be that some of these projects would be eliminated altogether, or depending on conversations we have with finance committee and council, we'll have a better understanding of how to categorize these projects and where to place them on the timeline. But we had proposed approximately one point three million in transfers out. A hundred and thirty four thousand was transferred from gas tax for operations. That has to go through, so we're not, we're not proposing to defer or unfund or cancel that transfer. However, for all the capital projects in streets, we had about three hundred ninety three thousands, or those are being deferred. And for facilities, we had seven hundred and eighty five thousand, including six hundred thousand, including sheriff substation, those have all been deferred, they will not be included in this year's budget. So it went from one point three million to a hundred and thirty four thousand. So all in all, the budget is going to have a deficit of less than one hundred thousand dollars based on what is being proposed today. Looking at the fiscal forecast, if we assume that the revised budget is adopted and looking at no new revenue measures. Expenses will exceed revenues by fiscal year twenty eight, twenty nine. However, we flattened out the loss to, or the, we stopped the decline in the general fund reserve beginning this year and carrying out all the way through twenty eight. By that year, expenses will then exceed revenue. So as you can see, the red line is expenses, the green line is revenues. The blue line is our reserve policy level. And the black line is our reserve. Now, even though the revenue and expenses from the prior fiscal year are incomplete and unaudited, there is sufficient data to come to the realization that our reserve balances have fallen below the policy level. And it actually needs to be taken to stop that. So the revised budget is being proposed to do just that. But again, this assumes no new revenue measures. Revenues are assumed to increase about three and a half percent per year. Expenses have about a three and a half, four percent on average. There are some expenses that are above the curve on that. One is our health benefits. Medical costs are going up for next year approximately eleven to twelve percent. That's the medical premiums. So that is a cost above the three and a half to four percent that's assumed in other areas. The other cost increase is the sheriff's contract. That's going to go up two hundred thousand dollars next year. And then another two hundred thousand the following year and it kind of goes, we're assuming a slight increase in future years. But this is the fiscal for So this is the fiscal forecast based on the revised budget and assumptions moving forward. And this will be part of the conversation for the council to discuss them. So in looking at the fiscal forecasts and what short term options do we have? If council wants to do a, oh, sorry, let me go through these. One thing that we can do, we've been requested to do is to reclass some housing element related expenses to affordable housing. And these, these short term options were discussed by the finance committee and also summarized by the finance committee and included in your staff report. The first one is the reclass housing element related expenses to the Affordable Housing Fund. There's approximately four million dollars in the Affordable Housing Fund. We're looking at possibly an estimate, an estimate of about one million dollars in housing element costs that could be transferred to the Affordable Housing Fund. If the council views it appropriate. What this would do would be an immediate injection of one million dollars into the general fund, increasing the reserve from one point nine million to two point nine million. Again, and then that would extend the runway even further for the council and the town to discuss more alternative options for fiscal sustainability. And this category falls under expense control and cost change. Another one for expense control and cost change is to change the policy to allow trail maintenance to be charged to the open space fund. This might be an immaterial amount, but all options are on the table. But this would alleviate any increased maintenance costs to the general fund if enacted. Another category is service delivery changes, reductions. That was the request for a balanced budget. Maintaining current reserve levels, however, without additional revenue in the future years, it'll just lead to further reductions in service level. On when coming to up with a fiscal sustainability plan or directions to take, you also have to look at revenue enhancement. Couple of the revenue measures that were discussed by the finance committee was redirecting two percent. The two percent UUT from the open space fund to the general fund. This would be, would require a fifty plus one percent approval. However, the revenue inflow would be immediate upon certification of the election and but the cons would be the special election. Another item that was discussed was the parcel tax, a public safety parcel tax of eight hundred dollars. This would generate approximately one million and remove one million in expenses from the general fund as this would be placed into a special fund. But this again, cons would be special election costs and two thirds majority approval. Looking at the revenue measures. Scenario one, we redirect UUT from open space. This will provide additional revenue for the next five years, beginning this fiscal year. Expenses again will still start to exceed revenue by twenty nine, thirty. And but however, this gives time or it gives the town time to explore newer additional options for fiscal sustainability and only requires a simple majority vote. Again, the red line is expenses and as you can see, becomes twenty nine, thirty. The red line starts to come up to the green one. However, it does build reserves up a little bit from twenty six, twenty seven through twenty nine, thirty. Scenario two is the eight hundred dollar public safety parcel tax. This would generate approximately one million in revenue starting in fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. It will also help offset increases to the sheriff's contract and free up funds in the general fund for other priorities. However, this does require a two thirds majority vote. And as you can see, beginning in twenty five, twenty six, all the way up through twenty eight, twenty nine, the reserve levels come up above the policy level and the policy level is still set at sixty percent. So what are the next steps if the council wants to declare, I'm sorry, to move forward the revenue measure? The next election is March fourth, twenty twenty five. So at the November thirteenth meeting, we'd have to adopt a resolution declaring a fiscal emergency. Then at the November twentieth meeting, adopt an election resolution, placing the measure on the ballot. December sixth is the last day to place the measure on the ballot. December tenth is the deadline for primary arguments. December seventeenth is the deadline for rebuttal arguments and impartial analysis. December twenty seventh is the deadline for printing the ballots and the initial cost estimate is one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a special election. If other local agencies decide to have an election on March twenty twenty five and those costs can be shared. But my understanding is that our The finance committee also looked at short, not only did they look at short term options, they also looked at long term options. Again, looking at the expense control, cost changes, ones to renegotiate the contract. The San Mateo County Sheriff who has addressed our largest operating budget directly, however, may incur some additional consulting legal costs. Revenue enhancements, vote for charter town status. This would be on the November twenty sixth ballot, it could generate one million to two million based on volume because with the vote for charter town status, the town could then set a real property transfer tax rate that is greater than what is allowed under the general status. Again, cons being may incur additional consulting and legal costs. Other revenue enhancement measures are renegotiate and increase property tax receipt percentage with San Mateo County. This is what we receive an allocation from the San Mateo County based on the property tax that the residents pay. We are one of the lower rates within the county. This could generate additional two hundred and thirty thousand with more of residents property tax dollars directed towards the town. Again, this process may incur additional consulting and legal costs due to the length of time that it will take to receive, to see a successful conclusion on this. Another revenue enhancement measure is consider a transient occupancy tax. Should the town ever consider a hotel or retreat conference center, transient occupancy tax would be assessed to visitors per night. Rates can be determined by ballot measure and they range from ten percent to twenty five, thirty percent, depending on which part of the state you visit. Again, cons being they may incur additional consulting and legal costs. One revenue enhancement item is, and we should really consider this, is updating our UUT telephone code. The language is very antiquated and does not reflect the current telecommunications industry. May incur some additional costs and generates some additional revenue, maybe twenty five to thirty percent of existing UUT telephone. Another idea that was brought up was private fundraising to fund the public safety. Pros, this may spark community interest, potential tax deduction. And but the cons being an uncertain forecast and uneven distribution among residents as this would be a voluntary So if the town were to implement the charter town amendment, will we vote for charter town status and to set our own real property transfer tax rate? Depending on the rate could generate approximately one point five million. And if the measure is improved in November twenty twenty six, the rate will be affected January first, twenty twenty seven. So in twenty twenty seven, or the first half of twenty twenty seven, we've received about half of the one point five million and then the next fiscal year, the budget for the entire amount. And this would will be based, will be based on the market rate of how the house is sold and not necessarily the assessed rate. So there's some benefits to having the immediate recognition of the value of the home. So these are some of my observations since I've been here since May. The revised budget extends the runway through fiscal year twenty eight, twenty nine and gives the town more time to explore additional options for fiscal sustainability. However, the revised budget will not return reserves to policy levels, nor will it restore service levels. There will be delays in permit processing, plan check approvals, inspections, should staff levels continue to fall. Town Hall will continue to be open on an open basis. The revised budget does not invest in staff development. Not properly developing staff leads to more reliance of consultants and maintain the revolving door of staff turnover. We provide services and services require people. The revised budget does avoid layoffs, but does decrease overall FTE. Only essential positions such as permanent town manager, town clerk, engineer. The building and planning director will be filled, others will be on a case by case basis. Or other alternative services or methods will be explored. Looking at next year's budgets, we must have more community inputs and multiple check ins with the council and the finance committee if the budget process goes along, with goals and priorities being clearly defined. So council direction. So staff is looking for council directions. Should we return with a balanced budget? Or are we okay with a slight deficit? Is a declaration of fiscal emergency needed? Is the town charter a viable option and are there any other options that have not been considered in this report? So that concludes my reports. I'm giving back to the council for discussion.
Thank you very much. Let's start with council questions. Jeff, would you be willing to start?
Sure. So under the capital transfers and the, I noticed it takes some money away from our road resurfacing. Do you have any feel for what that does to like our PCI scores or just our overall state of our roads? Like, are we, are we creating long term damage to our roads by not, by cutting back on that budget item?
Yeah, I mean, it's in a deferred maintenance, so yes, there will be some deterioration. I have not seen the latest PCI report, so I don't know what level we are. But our roads are in fairly good condition.
Agreed, yeah.
Yeah, but any, any deferred maintenance, any deferment of maintenance to the roads will have an impact on the deterioration.
Yep. The, the UUT telephone language, you submitted a twenty five percent increase, but I can't remember the, in dollar terms, what is the actual, like, how, how much extra money would that bring in from the telephone part of the UT?
It could bring in additional thirty to fifty thousand.
Okay. I think those are my, and our, and our current reserve policy is sixty percent, which I would argue, I mean, I just, I would say is conservative. Like, I think I see a lot more things in the thirty to forty percent range, but could you comment on that?
Yeah, that, that is a item up for discussion. It was specifically discussed by the finance committee. We don't have a recommendation yet, but I do believe that that will be part of the process for next year's budget. What the appropriate fund level will be, what will be the appropriate staffing levels? And what will be the appropriate use of consultants? That'll be significant conversations for the next budget.
Okay. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Mary.
Thank you so much. Really great and so much progress and so clear. It really is extremely helpful. And it's opened up a whole different set of options from what I was thinking of. So I'm somewhat flummoxed as to how to ask the right question, but at any rate, the the question of the needing the election, the special election. One question I have would be some of the, the sort of accounting issues that you brought up, like that you could switch, I hate to use this example because it's controversial, but the open space fund, do the trail maintenance, do the open space fund, do a couple of those things without changing the UUT. All of a sudden, would those all have to go to a special election? Or not?
So I think there are a few, few ideas mentioned in terms of reallocating funds from the open space fund to the general fund that would require an election. Tony, I think you mentioned something else having to do with trails.
But it, it wouldn't be the, sorry, but my understanding it was just for trails, which are on open spaces after all. But it it wouldn't be the gen, sorry, but my understanding it was just for trails which are on open spaces after all.
Okay, I think you've conflated the two. They're mutually exclusive, and one is redirecting two percent. The two percent UT that goes to the open space fund, redirecting that. To the general fund. The second request is allowing trails maintenance to be used by the open.
So I was trying to separate those two.
They are separate.
Yeah, so I I was just saying, do you have to do a special election for that?
No, the council, council for the use of the open space funds, that's a council decision.
Yeah, so all of a sudden it's looking like we don't a hundred percent need to go do a special election.
Based on what I'm proposing, no. We don't have to go to a special election.
Thank you, that's my biggest. Question.
Any other questions, Mary?
I don't think not, I have lots of question marks, but I don't think I don't have a specific question.
So. One thing I've struggled with is do we know, we got applicant payments. Do we know what the applicant costs are to the town, like do we have a sense for? Whether when you load in our staff time plus the consultant's time? Is are the payments matching those costs or is that an opportunity in the future to?
There is opportunity there to. Include more costs for the town. In to or to recover. More costs to the town, yeah, that is something that we are. We have to review.
I mean, we tried to be fair to the residents and charge them what it costs us, but I just want to make sure we're actually fully charging what it costs us and not making a logical.
That's the goal.
Yeah, got it, okay. So ERAF. Is ERAF like, are we gonna get that money, like it seems like ERAF comes and goes and I I've lost track of the number of perturbations on it.
So yeah, like. Like the triple flip, ERAF, it all depends on. School funding. If they have enough funding to for their. Their budgets and if there if there's a surplus, then yes, it gets returned back to us. We've been getting it the past few years because there is declining enrollment. In school systems and so. Yes. We have been getting it either.
Okay, and the number you put in the budget is the number we're gonna get or that you're?
It's actually below what we get average, so I I went conservative, but it's more than what we had in the proposed budget.
So one thing I couldn't quite parse out of the different, as you go forward in the fiscal years. Your assumptions on hiring is that we've hired the four key executive positions. Neck within the next year. And then the rest of the expenses are ongoing from there.
Yes, those those salaries are already baked in and so they're included in the assumptions as as it increases, so the goal is yes, fill those positions. But the other positions are probably going to have to be on a case by case basis.
Right, but. For your current budget, your current revised budget, you don't have those in there and you're taking advantage of the fact.
Do have those.
In terms of, I mean, I I thought we were getting savings because we haven't had to pay out.
Savings that I'm identifying are for this year only.
Okay.
So but the town manager budget, the town engineer.
Is all built.
Those are already baked into the assumptions.
Great. So then deferred capital. Did you build any kind of capital into future years, I mean, because we're not going to defer capital forever?
No, we're not going to defer capital forever, but again, for next year's conversation, I would like to have a full on. Capital improvement plan discussion where we prioritize. Identify what needs to be done and then.
Sure.
And the finance committee weigh in, council.
Right, but I guess what I was after was the graphs you showed us going out through, you know, twenty nine thirty. Was that any capital or are you assuming?
Only, the only transfer out was for gas tax.
Okay, so you're assuming no capital improvements potentially for the next five years in in the graphs, I'm not saying that that's what you're expecting to happen, but. But I just want to be clear that in some ways it's a little miss potentially misleading that. Those those expenses may be higher because of the capital transfer.
Right, but the priority is going to be maintaining the reserves above from going below zero.
Right.
That's why.
Got it. And then the sheriffs, I I mean, I know we've got increases in the sheriff because they've sort of given us. A break off their sort of rack rate, if you will. But what did you build in for their increases after that, because the COLA stuff in the last five years has been nuts, it's it's been way more than like three percent, I mean, so.
I baked in ten.
So ten percent on an ongoing basis for the sheriff, okay, great, thank you.
And I have eleven percent for benefit.
Right, but benefits is is a. I mean, relative to the sheriff's, I mean, ten percent of sheriff's contract is a big number.
Right.
Eleven percent of the benefits is a smaller number.
Right, but eleven percent of seven hundred thousand is. That's a big number.
Yeah, but it's still.
That's a number we don't have control over, we don't set that health premium rates and.
Peace, I get it, I'm just saying, but it's not ten percent of two point. Four million, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Craig, Judith.
Hey, I think we're all. Processing in real time for members of the public, if you are interested in. More of a deep dive on some of this, the finance committee discussions for me were helpful in the past, so. I do highly recommend those if if you have the fortitude. There there was a lot of effort put in, it was amazing. And and so I'm trying to process a lot in real time here. Some of these questions. Just occur to me, I I'm not quite sure where to go with them, so I'll just start in. On the sheriff contract. One of the solutions in the last couple of slides was renegotiate that.
Correct.
But is there any basis to think, like, has anything changed in our expectation around that? To report in, I I'm not aware of anything.
No current expectations, I think we're hoping that there could be a potential to either combine Woodside or sort of.
So is that kind of more more thinking outside the box then, okay, thank you. And then the cops, the. Public safety and the the credit of four hundred and twenty three that you said helped you adjust the sheriff's cost. Out of those. What's going to apply going forward, is is this the one time, like, can you help me understand that?
So next year, the credit is two hundred and. I think it's two twenty. But we're still going to have the public safety. Those monies we get every year.
Okay.
So but that's going to be a flat to, yeah, I'm going to try and maintain two fifty five.
Okay.
Which is basically increasing the ninety five this year. But. In. Twenty six, twenty seven. We have no credit. So it's full bore, so if it's going to go, well, general fund will be paying about two million of that.
Okay. And that's baked in?
Yes.
In terms of, you referenced annuitant savings and there, I think you're talking about benefits that we don't have to pay to annuitants, right?
Correct, yeah, we're paying and plus they're working part time, they're not working full.
Right, so what was baked into the. Assumptions for the next couple of years on. On the planning side where I know the annuitants are.
So the the salary costs are full time.
There.
Fully loaded. And. If we. Bring in more retired annuitants, then we'll have to pass.
Okay.
But we can't keep bringing in the same retired, we have to. Switch that up.
Okay. What? You you reduce the fire safety budget by something, I can't recall what that. That's ten thousand and what that is that less tree trimming?
It was just software that we were thinking about getting.
Okay, for planning and consulting. We've asked a lot or remarked a lot, I suppose, on the fact that we don't understand what the different consultants do at a granular level, I have a general gist. And you're actually saying we should consider consolidating and and looking at. Some of that, but. I guess, are, have you been tracking that and are there areas? That are ripe for adjustment in the shorter term rather than. Like, are are the, some of these consultants done with what they're doing, I guess, and that relates to the housing element?
Yes, the housing element ones are done, we had some minor expenses this fiscal year, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to, well. I don't want to speak too soon. But.
I know, never say never, but.
But you know, it it's, you know, based on the letter, you know.
Exactly.
But, yeah, I gotta collect the. But the. You know. We have so few departments. But yeah, the, when you have four different consultants. Providing the services that we should be providing. Getting one consultant to do all of it would generate some economies of scale, but that's probably. The biggest fish there.
Okay. All right. Some of these have already been answered by my colleagues, asked and answered. So just to summarize, the, we, is there an eligibility for a fiscal emergency declaration? And do we still need it given the updated?
Meaning like, is there a set list of?
No, I don't know what the criteria are.
It's it's predominantly where where is your reserve going and where your cash balances are and if you're. If there's a cliff in the near future, then yes, you declare fiscal emergency because you need to take immediate action. Is it also, not only is it for a special election. Say, for example, say we had collective bargaining. We could have used it to reopen. MOUs.
What?
If we had unions and collective bargaining agreements, the declaration of fiscal emergency would allow us to reopen those negotiations.
But we don't have that.
But we don't have.
Okay. And the last one here is, what is? I I assume you have baked in appropriate planning for unexpected events, but. We have weather and we have earthquakes and things like that, and what I'm trying to get at is how much tolerance is there? In the budget that you've got planned to accommodate? And how do you think about that when we're looking at the budget?
Right.
We can get really comfortable, but then, you know. Bolt of lightning happens and we're in a different place.
Right, so I I have not calculated the savings from the planning and building director and the town engineer, I mean, that would be. The first place that I would look at if we needed some, even if it was just to move it to another department to cover an overage. So, but I don't have. You know, I've built some in. But it's not a lot, this is, this is tight.
Yeah, that that's my point in in terms of thinking about. Where we are, there's clearly level of services that we will probably talk about, but then there's the. Out of our control force measure type. Issues to also factor in and not forget about. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
So a follow on to what Judith was asking, and I meant to ask it before. Did you factor in future projects, like how did you think about, I mean, we have a safety element that we need to revise, we talked about evacuation. And, you know, what we might do to, you know, further improve our resiliency. Are any of those factored in or is this literally a status quo kind of budget where it's just?
This is to get us to the end of the year. Yeah, but the, but the questions you're asking.
I'm asking about the the graphs that you did that go all the way out to twenty thirty, right? And I'm trying to understand what's built into that, because those are, those are the things that sort of say, oh, we could get out to twenty thirty before the expense and revenue cross. That sounds great, but but I don't know if that's real, if we actually have future projects. That we're going to do, which are going to increase expenses and then we cross that line much sooner, right?
Well, I'm anticipating that that will be discussed with the next budget. But and then my my forecast will be updated through that process. I mean, I, we we don't have time to. Go through all the nuances of what elements are coming up.
Right.
Now. But I can. In the next six months, when we're going through the the budget process, okay, what are the elements, what's the schedule for the elements? And yes, I will bake those in to the forecast.
But I guess then I just make sure I'm confirming what you're saying is the forecasts are potentially rosy for this. Because they're not including these things and and these things are only going to make the forecast.
Right, but I am baking in increase in consulting costs and but it may not be identified for a specific project.
Okay. Okay, but we do have some increase, and what what is that increase?
It's five to seven percent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Real quick, well, maybe not real quick, I got. I was little, I was confused in particular by the customer deposit slide, would you mind going back to that one and just?
That was a throwing. Was it east, that was east array.
You just want to buy it.
So yeah, so this is actually a separate fund, it is not. Part of the general fund, but it it's. There. Certain feedback I had I had seen was they wanted to know. You know, how how much is being charged to the applicant deposits and what's being paid to the applicant deposit, so. This is just for informational purposes.
Yep, now I understand that, but it's not in the general, no, 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 all good. Let's see. Is the, I'm going to assume that. Trail maintenance. For open space, that assumes status quo. That does not assume that the trail, does, I guess, let me ask it a different way. Does does this budget forecast assume the cost of trail maintenance? Is paid by, okay, so if that were something we wanted to do, what would be the incremental total additional amount ish?
For trail maintenance? Have to get back to you on it.
Okay, that's fair. But I would like to know that number.
But it's not, it's not a material number, so it's going to be less than.
Is it less than fifty thousand?
It may be around fifty.
Okay.
So.
Quick question, because this came up last year about where the White's. Fee was. The Willow Commons Project. The, they they were reimbursed for their fees. It was put in the general fund until after, you might not know this, it was put in the general fund or it was pulled from the general fund because at the time we didn't have. An affordable housing fund policy.
Okay.
Now we have a policy. And so it was recommended, my colleagues can. Concur or not, that that would be an appropriate use of the affordable housing fund, and so there might be incremental. I think it's like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars there.
Okay.
So something to check on.
That one point nine just went to two point one.
Fact check all of that, but.
The key waiver, as I recall, was like a hundred and eighty six thousand.
A hundred and ninety six. What Jeff says. Let's see. My, if I'm calculating this right, if we have a fund balance with this budget of one point nine million dollars on a. Three point, or I'm sorry, on a seven point three total budget, that would put us at a twenty six percent. Reserve, is that correct? Right. Another question as a follow on to Judith, I thought maybe. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought your question had to do a little bit with potential unforeseen national disasters. And so I'm going to assume that that is the purpose of the reserve fund, of the of the reserve balance. One of, let me rephrase that.
Had we had an unassigned balance? Yes, but you know, the there was designated charges. About three million and then we had the unassigned balance, which was used for. Any. Unforeseen, but the one point nine, so the total, yeah, to answer your question, yes.
I mean, in theory, that is the purpose of a reserve.
Sorry, I was getting a little too.
No, 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 all good, okay. And then last, this is with respect to the potential use of the affordable housing fund. To support some of the housing element questions, and maybe this is more of a question for Catherine. If we were to do. If we were to do that, is it possible to do it in a way that we could replenish it? Once either the entire thing or a portion? At a later date when we have, when we're in a better, um, fiscal position?
So in terms of replenishing it, that sounds more like a loan, um, from the affordable housing fund. And I'm going to, now I'm going to kick this back to Tony because of my understanding about loans is there are some restrictions about doing those within the same fiscal year. Uh, and I can, I can do a part two of your question as well, but wanted to.
Yeah.
That's why I chose the word replenish instead of.
Okay, okay. It sounded like a loan, but, but maybe it's something else.
Yeah, um, the, what, I think what needs to be determined first is, is it allowable use for the, for the funds? I mean, we can, we can do the, if it's allowable, we can do this. And then say, you know, say tie it to the charter town, that was the charter, if the, if we decide to go with the charter town, if that vote passes, then at that point we can replenish the affordable housing fund. But if I, it, I don't, I wouldn't call it a loan.
Okay. Um, in terms of whether that would be allowable use, um, that is something that staff started to look at. I looked at that question with John Biggs, who of course worked with the subcommittee to develop that policy. Um, there are some administrative expenses that are allowed by that policy, but, um, they do need to be, you know, for an affordable housing project. And so I think we'd really want to take a close look at that policy because the entire housing element is not just for affordable housing, it's for all levels of housing. Um, so I do have some concerns there. Um, ultimately, uh, the council needs to approve, um, you know, allocations from that affordable housing fund. Uh, you know, consistent with your policy unless you want to change the policy. But I, but that, those funds did come from, um, uh, you know, in lieu fees that are from your municipal code that are intended for affordable housing. So they've really got to be tied to that affordable housing purpose.
I have a follow on question because there's both housing element costs that we've already incurred, whether it's last year or within the fiscal year, and then there's those going forward. I'm not sure, I'm getting a little confused as to what the proposal might be or might have been.
The proposal from, um, the finance committee was for past.
And is that, is there any issue with that? Because going back and re-characterizing, you know, if it's legitimate, it's legitimate. But is there also some look back restriction that you need to look at?
Uh, yes, I've primarily been thinking about just the substantive limitation about is this for affordable housing? Uh, but, uh, you know, we, we would look at that question in terms of.
It's not clear.
I think it's not clear. I, I think we are looking more at whether this would be allowable use of the, of the funds.
Okay, that's it. Um, any other questions before we?
I'm afraid, I'm afraid I do have more questions. Questions beginning questions. Uh, in that case, can we, could we do a percent of the, of the, of the housing plan? Could we say that 50% of our housing plan was for affordable housing?
I, I guess I would suggest that you direct staff to look into that question.
Right, I mean, I just raise that as a question.
Yeah.
Uh, doesn't need to be answered. Then the other questions are, how often do we have to change annuities?
The, the annuities have 960 hour limitations.
But you said that they couldn't keep.
Yeah, you can't, you can't.
How many years can we do them?
And then bring them back and let them go and bring them back.
How many times can we do that?
Say, no, this person's an employee.
They can serve one per position. So interim planning and building director, let's say, for example, using Terrence. Terrence cannot come back as interim planning and building director ever.
Oh, okay. Um, that was one. Uh, I, I am a little confused about the sheriff's contract and the way we've been negotiating with the sheriff's contract. Are we in any way accumulating, developing debt to the sheriff's department? Is this going to be something we have to pay back? Okay. Uh, and then suddenly I didn't understand the accounting that had to do with saving the $120,000 for the special election. And, uh, was that accounted for in your budgeting, the 120,000?
No.
Okay, that answers my next question was, could we balance off the 98K of our not matching budget by?
Yeah, no, the things, the things we're asking for direction are not included in the budget.
I, yeah, yeah, okay. I think that those are my questions.
Tony, do you mind going to that slide where you're reminding us what the direction you're seeking is so we can ponder while? We get comment?
Which one?
Thank you.
The options.
Thanks.
Thank you, good suggestion. Um, anything else before we open it up? Um, okay, I would like to open it up for public comment. I have one hand raised in the schoolhouse. Several hands raised in the schoolhouse, come on up in any order.
Thank you all. Uh, I'm Carter War. I want to express my sincere appreciation, you know, to the finance committee, you know, and to the finance department, and particularly, you know, Tony for his work, you know, making this happen. I'm encouraged. Uh, you know, the news is, you know, we're pretty dismal around here. And, uh, you know, as, as I'm looking at the numbers, you know, this is better than what was even in the packet. And, uh, so I'm, I'm encouraged, you know, that, you know, with the balanced budget. Uh, I, I like the way that it, uh, looks forward, uh, and is essentially appropriate staffing. I think that this proves that there isn't any emergency. At the same time, I do think, you know, that there are going to be, you know, tough, tough decisions moving forward. Uh, you know, with, you know, with next year's budget, you know, for those capital improvement projects that, you know, are being deferred this time around. Uh, I would encourage, you know, the, uh, town council to utilize, you know, the in lieu funds, you know, to replenish the, uh, reserves. Because essentially, you know, we wouldn't have used those housing funds if it hadn't been, you know, for, you know, the, the housing element demands from the state. Uh, I do believe that, uh, at least a quarterly review, you know, of, uh, you know, the budget, you know, uh, the actual against the budget needs to be, uh, an ongoing, uh, report. And with Tony's help, I don't think that would be, uh, you know, very hard. In closing, I don't think there is need for either the emergency or the election, you know, uh, at this time. You know, I do think there, there is forward planning, you know, necessary, you know, for, you know, potential, you know, charter city, uh, you know, shifting the government to a charter city. And thank you so much for, you know, all of your hard work and tonight's, you know, presentation.
Thank you, Carter. Um, next up.
Hello, you all, hardworking people. Um, I want to also acknowledge Tony and the finance committee representative here, um, for their hard work and acknowledge that there are three members of the open space committee here tonight. Um, I am going to speak a little bit about, um, open space issues, um, if you will. Um, we are all concerned, um, by the town's financial position and I realize that, um, that involves people across the nation now. Uh, the most frequently mentioned short-term measure, uh, for revenue enhancement is, uh, uh, before the town, is the March 2025 ballot measure that we put to the voters, arresting the 2% user utility tax, supporting the growth of the open space fund, and instead add that revenue to the existing 5.5% supporting the general fund. If this year means this full year, and I'm now reflecting on something Tony mentioned about the tax being available this year, if that means that it would be retroactive to July 1st of 2024, can the town actually make a retroactive collection? And if you decide that it can, does it want to? Um, I think it might be worth considering the effective date, um, as the date of the election itself. Um, in tandem, you have in the past discussed that the open space fund would, with conservation committee input, directly pay for maintaining the open spaces we have been jointly caring for, uh, with conservation, those being Spring Down, Frog Pond, Port Open Space and Shady Trail. Town committees are listening and we want to help, we care. Uh, the open space and conservation committees have already formed subcommittee, a subcommittee to support and coordinate, um, maintenance as effectively as we can. Um, this is the first time, however, that the council has received and entertained a suggestion about charging the open space fund for another purpose entirely. Town trail maintenance does not accord with the way past ballot measures were written. It stretches to the breaking point, the interpretation of the town's open spaces. And whether it is legal is for you all to decide, uh, but it certainly would be a breach of faith. And I think it would be impolitic. An alternative is a possibility that we explore mutuality. We are available. I don't feel that as a speaker, I'm speaking for myself. I should have introduced myself, Betsy Morgan Thaler. Um, I am the chair of the open space committee, but not speaking as the chair tonight. So I won't float ideas out there, but there are ideas out there. The core of the open space fund and any interested accrues exists by vote of the residents. It also exists by council, one, not, okay, fast. It also exists by council approval. The thought of solving one problem at the expense of the open space fund that not only did not contribute to the problem you're addressing, but as the town's historic legacy and identity, it really does go against the grain. Thank you for the extra 30 seconds.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you all. My name is Nona Chariello and I live at 163 Brookside Drive. I've served on the open space committee for 11 years now. And in my view, the committee's job is to advise the town council on the open space needs of the town and how those needs are addressed by the open space fund. Our advice to you is guided by a social contract with the voters, with donors to the fund, and with the town's youngest residents and future generations. The open space fund has guidelines that were formalized by a four to zero vote of the town council in 2017. The guidelines allow expenditures for acquisitions, legal fees and preservation and enhancement of open space. Specifically, and I quote from the guidelines, "Preservation and enhancement activities are typically one-offs, not general maintenance. Addressing the initial onset of sudden oak death or creating a wildlife corridor would be preservation and enhancement. Routine mowing, weed abatement and annual spraying for sudden oak death would be examples of maintenance." End quote. The fund guidelines do not constrain the 2% UUT according to the former town attorney's determination, and it can be used for open space maintenance. One objection for doing so, however, is that without U2, UUT income, the open space fund can't keep up with land prices, especially when investment of the fund was earning 1% or less. Gifts to the fund can take the place of revenue. Notably, a significant request of more than half a million dollars was received after the guidelines were adopted. While I don't know if the guidelines influenced that, Dave, the guidelines were intended to provide long-term assurance to donors about how that fund would be used. A part of me is wondering if we will keep our word on that. Like everyone here and like all of you, I am deeply concerned about the town's financial crisis. As you address this crisis, I urge you to focus on mechanisms that resolve it without sacrificing the town's long-term commitment to open space. Borrowing from the fund rather than altering its fundamental purpose would be consistent with this. With all the changes taking place in Portola Valley, the need for open space, connectivity, trails and the mental and physical health benefits that they provide will only grow in the future. Thank you for taking my comments.
Thank you, Nona. Um, anyone else in the schoolhouse? All right, I don't see any other hands raised in the schoolhouse, so I will, um, take this to public comment on Zoom. Um, there is one hand raised, Rita Comas.
Hi, first I want to thank you, Tony, for that great presentation. It was, it was really thorough and it's what we've been asking for, for so many years. I just really appreciate it. Uh, one of the questions that I have been asking for a long time is, do we have anything built in with our consultants to convert any of them? Some of the consultants we've used, we've spent, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on. And, uh, you know, I, I, when I looked at the contracts a long time ago, there was no conversion clause. But that's something that, um, we could probably save some money and retain some of the brain trust that we've paid for, you know, in educating some of the people that we've been using as consultants for many years. I, I hope that's, uh, something that we can put into future contracts. And it is a way to, for us to save money and to get some employees that, um, have worked in our town and that we have invested a lot of money into. Thank you for your report.
Thank you, Rita. Um, I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom. Give it a second. Oh, one hand raised, Helen Walter.
Hi, um, oh, sorry, let me, uh, Zoom keeps doing that to my name, apologies. I, uh, I do not work for Senator Becker. Um, I am here speaking, uh, for myself. Apologies, I do not know how to change that right now. Sorry about that. Um, first of all, thank you guys, um, all of you for what you're doing and for the situation that we found ourselves in. Thank you to staff for their hard work behind the scenes to make this clear. I wanted to talk about the open space funds for a moment. Um, as many of you know, um, the national standard for open space is 10 acres per 1,000 residents. Um, California under the Columbia Act for in lieu fees is three to five acres per 1,000 residents. Um, and then oftentimes cities, if, um, if they can't spend it due to the nexus, uh, in close, close enough proximity to the, um, to where the in lieu fees came from, um, it actually will go back to the developers. Um, the other aspect, um, that I wanted to bring up is the city of Roseville, it used to ask for nine acres per, um, for developers. City of Palo Alto asked for five acres, city of Sunnyvale, five acres per, um, for in lieu fees. City of Mountain View is three acres per, um, for in lieu fees. And then you have to spend them in close, you know, with that nexus. Um, I bring it up because the city of Roseville was asking for nine acres per 1,000 from developers. And I bring it up because they haven't been able to maintain all of their open space. They have so much, they have a plethora. Um, obviously we have a lovely cushion there, but I would point out that other cities have not been able to maintain the open spaces without, uh, funding from elsewhere. I'm trying to figure out that funding. So I just wanted people to understand that history and what cities are now facing with the maintenance and operations of our, of open spaces in the region. Um, so, um, uh, that's all. And I really appreciate, again, your consideration and thanks for, uh, your time.
Thank you, Helen. Um, next up is Kristy.
Yeah, I'm not, oh, there we go. I just wanted to say thank you for your presentation. It seemed like one of the better presentations we've seen in quite a while. So I do want to really thank you for that. I am in favor of charter city exploration. And, um, and I am in favor. And, and I am in favor of the town center opening for longer hours. Right now, the hours are eight to 12, four days a week and closed Friday. So I'd like the town council to consider people in the office. I know that's hard to hear for the employees because, but we miss, like a lot of times I think, oh, I want to go ask that question. I want to look at this document. Oh, I can't, it's one o'clock. And it's hard, but I know we have hard times ahead. But I thought I might as well ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie. Any other hands here in the schoolhouse before I close? Public comment, we do not have any additional hands on Zoom, so I will now close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council for discussion. Sure, sure. There was a request to take a short break, so it's 8:52. We'll resume at 8:57. All right, thank you very much, guys. It's 8:57. And we will move on now to council discussion. Who would like to start?
I can start.
Okay, I think that's, thank you for that reminder. So.
Would you want me to put the slide back up?
Sure. So, yeah, let's first talk about the budget specifically. Maybe let's go through and do that and then we can move on to the other, other items. So who would like to start specifically on the 2425 budget? Go ahead.
So I'll start because I have a strong opinion. I think we should have a balanced budget. I think you're at close, which is great. I think we can find the extra money. I think given the financial irregularities, unfortunate events, whatever you want to call it that we've had for the last three and a half years, I think we owe it to the town just this year, let's do a ballot budget. And then I'm totally supportive of your goal of, you know, starting sometime, hopefully like in February, starting a really in-depth discussion of what our goals are and where we're going. But I think for this one, I, I think, because what, we're like 100,000 off roughly? I can help you find 100,000. I mean, just, I mean, just looking at the budget I saw go by tonight, I think that we can find it. I think I know where we can probably get some grants. Well, and, and yeah, we can get to, get to that. Is that part of this? Do we bring that up now? Okay, so I, I guess what I'm, I'm trying to separate out the pieces. So there's taking the housing element costs and basically moving those into the Affordable Housing Fund. And then there's the whites fees. So I'm very supportive of the whites fees. I believe that's actually what we discussed. So if you didn't include that, I think you should. And then we'll figure out what's left after that. In terms of taking the housing element expenses and putting them against the Affordable Housing Fund, I'm not for that. I think that's. So there were, there are two pieces. There were, there were the whites fees and we agreed to waive those. And I think that, that that's clearly an affordable housing project. I'm very comfortable with that and I should, I think we should move forward. But in terms of taking the monies that we spent for developing the housing element and taking that out of the Affordable Housing Fund, I would oppose that. You know, maybe in the future, if, if we find that we really are against the wall, but given what you've given us now, I think it's a premature and I also think it's wrong. I mean, I think the goal was to do affordable housing. If, if we ever want to have affordable housing, depleting that fund's not going to get us there. So I'm not sure if that's what you wanted with the budget, but I've included it because you sort of asked. Thank you.
Because he did such a good opener, I, I'm afraid I, I agree. I hope, I feel like it's achievable and let's do it and let's absolutely tighten our belts and, and show, show our, all our ribs as best we can to show that we really want to fix this. It's the best we can do if it means less services. And I, I really do think that the town's going to have to hear that we're going to have less services. We're not going to have more than four hours, five days a week open. There's going to be things that people are going to have to do for themselves and committees are going to get to do for themselves, which actually they like to do. And so in some ways, it's a great opportunity. Everybody's thinking outside of the box where they can get money for grants. You know, who the best grant writer is and, you know, that kind of thing. People will pitch in to make, to make that difference. I, you know, you did a terrific job of, of, there's, there's a, I don't know whether we're going to, in this context, talk about the finance committee's recommendations to us? Is that end up being part of this conversation on the budget? Okay, but I, there, there, there are things that I think we need to be considering. First of all, saving that $125,000 for the special election right off the bat would be a good thing, right? I sort of feel that way. And it also shows a, sends a message to the town that we really do have a problem, but we don't need to bring it to a ballot. And if we're going to end up having to be on the ballot in two years anyway, it gives us much more time to think out what we're going, what, what that's going to look like and why. And I, I think there's a number of things that we haven't worked on in our, in our financial planning that are thinking outside of the box that we have discussed, including sharing services with Woodside, sharing staff with Woodside, sharing searches with Woodside, also annexations. There are a number of other things that we need to look at for our fiscal planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, so I made my comment.
I didn't.
Yeah. I want to balance like.
So I apologize for not managing that more tightly. Craig was just trying to point out that we were just focused on budget right now.
Right, you've made that point, both of you.
So regarding budget.
Yeah, on the budget, yeah, for the reasons Craig articulated. I, I think for this particular budget, I do want to see a balanced budget. We've got to start on a new path. We've got to turn the page. And I do think though, I view it as more of a work in process. If we reset and then, you know, we're going to learn where the service levels that are appropriate for the community are, I think. We're going to get input, we're going to be able to look at this on a periodic touch base. And I, I think this is going to be a dialogue, an ongoing dialogue. And I just view this as a reset for that. On the more specific proposals, yeah, look at the white fees and see, because that, that is a great point that was caught by others. The housing element, I actually think I'd be open to some proportionality if it's permitted. My guess is that can only go forward, so I'm not sure it's actually much help. But, but if that were available, you know, we spent a lot of time understanding affordable housing in town and that seems legitimate, but, but clearly all of it was not for affordable housing. Open space maintenance. I, I take the point of the open space committee. I don't think using their funds for trails is going to move the dial too much. We can look at that in the ongoing dialogue and see if it does make, move the dial and, and address needs, but I don't think that's a really important source of balancing. But I do want Tony to come back and say, here's what has to be done to get to a balanced budget. And this is the, you know, price you're going to pay in terms of service level. I do think there is going to be a need to look at the reserves as part of our ongoing dialogue and, and I'll hold my comments on other pieces for later.
Thanks, Judith. Oh, I'm sorry, poor Jeff. I'm so sorry. Go ahead, Jeff.
You're so little.
Yeah, so having pored over this with Tony for a couple hours on Monday, there are several steps we could take to get to that balanced budget and yes, why not? I actually honestly forgot that I, I thought at some point that we actually had applied inclusionary housing funds to the Willow Commons fee waiver. But if we haven't, then, I mean, that, that's it right there. So, yeah, I mean, I, it feels like we could get to that balanced budget with, with something, things that we wouldn't miss too much. I mean, I'd like to know what they are, but I actually, we, we identified quite a few options that I think are, are things we could certainly live without for a year. Are we talking about the fiscal emergency?
Yeah, we're just doing budget right now.
Just, just, okay, so we're just on the orange point. Okay. That's my, those are my main thoughts on the budget itself.
Okay, I'm in agreement.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I agree with Craig. I would not support using the inclusionary housing fund against the housing element expenses. I mean, partly I just think it's, it's not what that fund's intended for, but also quite honestly, we very well might discover whether it's legal or not because we're in court, because YMB law or some other group sues us. I mean, it's, it's, it could be, it's, it's a risky move. I'll caution on that and that was my one other thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm in agreement on the balanced budget. I am optimistic that we can get there either through the white fee and/or use of the, even if it's a small amount, the open space maintenance portion. With respect to that, I know, you know, that's an unpopular position based on the comments heard here tonight potentially. But when we're tightening our belt, I only think, I think it's fair that we're all sharing the burden together. Regarding the housing fund, I echo the comments made by Craig and Jeff. I could become open to it if there is a possible way to replenish the fund once there's fiscal solvency in later years. But I absolutely agree, there's an unknown downside risk here, both with HCD and trying to get recertified, as well as we could be inviting a housing advocate lawsuit. So that is it on. Does anybody have any other comments? Or actually, let's, let me go back to you, Tony. Does that give you enough to work with with respect specifically to the 2425 budget?
Yes, balanced budget.
Okay. Since nobody else asked about, since nobody else mentioned potential use of the open space fund for open space maintenance, is there, can we just go around and hear?
I did.
Oh, this is just, this is on the budget line item for, this is to replenish. Can you articulate it better than I can, Tony? Well, I know you can, but would you be willing to? But this is not respect to the, to the fund and it's using it for trail maintenance.
Yes.
Did you include that in the budget? I thought you didn't.
No.
No.
I did not include anything that I'm asking direction for.
So if we want to get to balanced budget, is that something others would agree for Tony to include? And my comment was.
That amount would be 57,000. Can I just clarify? This is, we're talking about open space, open space reserve funds to, for maintenance of open space or maintenance of trails? I mean, trails and open space are, there's overlap, but they're, they're two different things.
That's fair. So.
Because I would, I mean, I, I personally would, would be open to open space funds being used for the maintenance of open space. I would not support it for trails.
Right, same here.
And, and I have a slightly more nuanced, being a longtime open space committee member. So I definitely would be opposed to using it for trails. I would be willing to have it for sort of limited use if it was just out of the UUT, like not out of the principal fund. We've invested the fund in higher yield as well, right? I mean, through the recommendation to the finance committee?
Yeah, our portfolio is currently yielding about 4.3%.
Right, so we.
And there's 8 million in there, so it would be earning approximately $300,000, which is almost what the UUT is.
Exactly. So I just want to be clear that at least we've moved that into something that's growing at a 4% rate, not a 1% rate. The other thing that I heard, and I think it was known as, I'd like to see more volunteer participation. You know, we've talked with conservation and open space and maintenance and then we end up hiring consultants to go do this work for us and it costs us $100,000. When we have people here who know most of this stuff and we could go out and provide the labor and we could do it for considerably less, if not free. So, you know, I would love to see the, basically the committees get together and think about what it means to have more volunteer participation, like more physical labor, volunteer participation. I think that we could go a long way in terms of maintenance of the open space. The trails are related, I mean, we used to, in the old days, I mean, we used to maintain the trails as well and we could even consider that. But I don't think that should be coming out of the open space.
So the question, the clarified question, which is use of the open space fund for open space only maintenance. I think I heard Jeff was agreeable to that. Judith?
Well, my question for Tony is if the 57,000 is for trails, do we know what's currently being spent on maintenance of the open space? How much, what order of magnitude?
We'd have to get back to that.
Yeah, yeah. I, I would, I would prioritize trying to come up with some, you know, volunteer mechanisms for that first. But, you know, open space does need to be maintained. So I, I would want more information, to be honest.
Mary?
Oh, I have a pretty different take on this. I'm sure it's a minority position, but I'm going to give it because minority positions are important. Green spaces include animal corridors, easements, trails, rights of way, conservation easements. These are all, those are all, I think, essentially neglected parts of our duties towards our open spaces. We are, we are letting people build fences that prevent our animals from moving through our corridors. The, putting the, some of the assets that we have bravely put together to the tune of $8 million for making sure we are really providing animal corridors and our rights of way, our roadside roads that rights of way are ecologically correct, that codes are enforced. I mean, there's lots of things that I can imagine are as important as getting a few more acres on the peninsula are that we can do as a town that would enhance the value of our open spaces. So I would just think about redefining in our minds. We've all started with a sort of a limited view of what, you know, we have Dorothy Ford, we have four open spaces. Well, no, we don't. We have hundreds of open spaces and they all need to be maintained. So I would be for using it. Use it or lose it.
You're in favor of using the open space fund for maintenance of the open space?
Yes, and thinking differently about open space engineering.
Okay.
Which I would send back to the open space committee to think about.
Okay, so we don't know what the total number is. Tony needs to research that. I am hearing, I don't know if we actually have to take a vote on this, but in terms of general direction, it seems like both are, Jeff, Mary and I are in favor of that.
Oh, okay, got it.
The, the other caveat is if there are. The other caveat is if there are guidelines, we have to figure out the legal treatment. If it's for preservation enhancement of a defined type of open space, those exist, and we have to go through the right process for that. So that needs to be part of the project.
Sarah, to clarify, are you saying of the 2% UUT, or are you saying out of the fund itself? The principal fund?
It doesn't matter.
No, it does matter, because one of them is limited to 2%, and the other is limited to $8 million.
My, my, my thought was not the UUT, we'll get to that, but I'm.
So you're sure 8 million, like?
No, not 8 million. This is going to be $50,000.
No, no, but the 8 million dollar fund, you're saying you would take money out of the 8 million dollar fund to support me? I just.
In the open space, yes. If that works with the language per the review that Judith just recommended, I've heard there is flexibility there, but obviously, there's work to be done on that language.
I have not reviewed the language, so we will need to review that when we bring this.
And you could cap it at 100,000.
So assuming there is, the language review happens, and it would allow for it, I want to be clear one more time. Jeff, are you in favor?
Well, to Craig's point, I mean, I would prefer, if we're going to do that, I would prefer that it come from the UUT and not from, I mean, there is donor fund, there are donor funds in the, in the open space fund. I would not want to use donor funds for this. I would use UUT funds. I think we can differentiate between the two.
Yeah, but we may not, that that would assume that we're going forward with the UUT. Oh, I thought you were talking about through an incremental. I misunderstood what you were saying.
We already have it. The 2% UUT already exists.
Right, right.
Those are the open space.
It's going in the open space fund.
Yes, yes. That, I thought you were talking about the, the revenue measure. So I misunderstood you. So now I see why you were so like, what? Okay, now that we're clear, I'm glad you asked the question. Yes, out of the, out of the UUT portion. So there's a, so sorry, this has been a confusing conversation. Jeff, are you clear?
Yeah, and I'm, and I support that, yes.
Okay, and Mary, do you still support it? Okay, so that's your direction. My apologies for that being a little.
But let me just clarify, are you saying that that's the first place to go to when trying to get to a balanced budget? I'm a little confused.
No, it's one of the list of things that I was, so I personally, I had mentioned the white fee as well as that. Yes.
And we do have other places to look as well.
Yeah, I just don't want this to be to the
direction.
To undermine efforts to bring forth other ideas that might be more straightforward. I don't know what you're going to find, so there may be.
And it might be a small amount. We don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't want, I don't want to be the first place we look. I would be open to it. It doesn't have to be the first place we go to make up that difference.
All right. Moving on. Is, so now, Tony, does that give you enough? Is there any other questions we could answer?
I have a general.
I do have one question, which is, did we get on direction in terms of the interest of using the Affordable Housing Fund for the housing element costs? Because I think that would take some research to see if that was legal. If there's not council consensus on that, then I would perhaps set that aside for now.
Tonight, can I make a comment on that? Moving forward, if we have specific affordable housing projects that we're needing to get consults on or or put specific funds aside for, could that be taken out of the end fund?
Well, that's the policy.
Yes, that's in the policy. That's clearly in the policy.
Yeah. Okay, so that, that's easy. Then it would be distinct, just need to remember to do it.
So in terms of direction on that, I guess we need to go around and have the same identification of where the, where the majority is.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay. All right, who would like to start there? I know we already mentioned it, but I think just to be clear.
You just want to get recap, yeah, so I mean, so I'll just recap my recap.
Thank you.
Which was, no.
Okay.
Ditto.
I mean, I'd be open to it if we were in a corner, but my sense is we don't need to go there. And it would be, it would cost us some money in terms of legal fees, maybe consulting to figure out if that's possible. So I would, I would tend to deprioritize it. So I would, only if we had to.
Continuing on my line of thought on this, for example, Dorothy Ford Open Space, the work we've done on that, and all the work that's been done on that has been for affordable housing. Plain and simple, not general, anything. Could that be segregated and be legitimate, legitimate, not legitimated, but legitimate?
Well, I think, I think, sorry to jump in here, but I think what Catherine was saying is she would need to research it.
Yeah.
And so the question is, do you want her to spend the money to research it? Do you want to? So we just heard from Jeff and Craig firmly, they're not interested in using the Affordable Housing Fund regardless. I'm hearing from Judith, it would be very low priority from her.
Yeah, and retrospectively, I think it's very difficult. So.
So what?
Yes, no.
No.
If it's going to cost money, I don't want to do it.
Okay, I think we have direction. The answer to that is no. So thank you for asking for clarification there as well. All right, so you're good now, Tony?
Yes, I'm good.
All right. So given this, one thing I wanted to share at this point in terms of discussion, if we, if you guys don't mind going out of order, is, and by the way, I don't know if this might change your decision on the Affordable Housing Fund, so my apologies if so. I had a conversation with Supervisor Ray Mueller a couple days ago. He connected me with San Mateo County Executive, Mike Calagie. What they, what Mike Calagie confirmed today that is that there could, that there would be available to us an option for what's called a lease leaseback. And in a lease leaseback, what would happen is the town would lease town property to the county, and then the town would lease it back. And so the county cannot provide a loan to us, but they can do that type of arrangement. And they have done it before. We gave Belmont as an example recently, who did this with a soccer field, and I think one of their city hall buildings. And so my understanding, this type of arrangement would require, he made it out like they have a team that could help us facilitate this relatively quickly. The terms would be 2% interest rate and would need to be paid back within three to five years. So this is a new, just off the presses, late afternoon today option in terms of giving us a little bit of float.
Just to clarify, we would, we would sell a piece of property to the county for a lump sum, and then we would pay it, basically, we'd pay that loan back as a lease on the same, on our property.
There would be no sale of property. It would just be a lease to the county and a leaseback. It's called a lease leaseback.
Oh, okay, so it would be, it would be, okay, be a long term lease to them, and then we just paid back, okay.
And Catherine, if there's any additional commentary you can provide around what I shared, please do.
I think you summarized it well. As a matter of, for, for legal reasons, the county cannot provide a standard loan to towns or cities. But this arrangement is tried and tried, tried and tested. As you mentioned, Belmont, Belmont used it a few years ago. And I recently had experience with this with Halfpenny Bay. They also have a current lease leaseback agreement with the county to help them fund the purchase of property.
Can you give us a rough, I mean, you, you lease the baseball field or the soccer field or something, and you get how much money for it?
Well, that would be subject to the negotiation.
I mean, just give me ballpark. I mean, talking $10,000 or $100,000, I mean.
Oh, several million.
For, for a field?
That's property value.
Okay, great, got it. That's helpful. Thank you.
So let's say just, let's pretend, let's just say a million dollars, then we'd have a 2% interest rate, $20,000 a year.
I assume there are restrictions on them using, changing the leased property and that we would be at risk of losing that property or forfeiting it or having it sold if we were not able to pay it back, which I do not anticipate, but to put it all out there. Are those a typical term?
I'd have to go back to the paper, but yeah, that is essentially, they do have an expectation that they would be paid back and that the, the town property is a collateral.
I'll also share that Mr. Calagie doesn't think that there will be any additional credits. It's the county, is my understanding, that provided the credits for the sheriff's contract. And he doesn't think that that will happen beyond the two years that we've had credits. So beginning in '26, '27, we'll be at a $2.3 million annual fee for the sheriff contract. So I bring this up, obviously, it's an interesting new option we have. And I think, I know it's hard to process real time, but I think it puts our options in terms of tax revenue measures into a different light. And so I think people should kind of try to absorb that.
Question, what restrictions would be imposed on our use of the property? And what would this, if anything, interfere with in terms of our ability later to raise revenue or operate? Like, are there any operational implications of doing a lease leaseback?
If we can bring back more information on this, if, I think, as you, as you mentioned, you're, you're learning about it in real time, and I am going mostly on memory. But generally, when the collateral city property is, you know, city hall, that's pretty common. There are no operational impacts. The county doesn't, you know, have any restrictions in terms of the, of the use. It truly is just the collateral property that allows the, the lease, the leaseback to occur.
I also don't know how, you know, what options are available to us with respect to town properties, but I know in addition to the obvious ones that we all know about, there are several parcels up in Woodside Highlands. So I think we should be thinking about all, all options, and I don't know, you know.
I forgot one other salient piece, which is that they do require an appraisal of the property, that is, the property. So we have to make sure that the appraisal was sufficient to cover the amount.
Correct. That's fair.
And there was the ad hoc committee on town owned property. There is an existing list of all of those.
There's a map.
There's a, there is a list.
So to tie this back to the, you know, to our direction that we're giving. This, you know, this is, I mean, it's, you know, it's complicated. I'd probably rather not get, get into it if we didn't have to, but you know, in terms of the next question of fiscal emergency, this feels like an alternative to the, you know, the things that the, the fiscal emergency measures were concerned. It feels like an alternative to the parcel tax or, or the UUT diversion we've been talking about. So I'd say, you know, it's something that feels like we could probably do it on a relatively, like, in a, we, I don't feel like we need it this moment, but you know, in a year or two, we might, might be in a situation where we want to raise some money, and it, we could, you know, we could lease back a relatively kind of small piece of property, and, and, you know, if we needed $300,000 for a future budget, you know, in the short term, like before, you know, let's say that we get to a charter, to the next thing, the charter thing, but in that interim, we're falling short on, on a year year basis. It's something that could be a stopgap measure, not unlike, say, the UUT diversion we were talking about. So it feels like something to keep on the table and consider, but it also makes me feel a little less, changes my thinking on the fiscal emergency when we get there.
So I'm wondering if it's, I'm thinking it might be nice just to combine these three at this point, because they, they all are intermixed, in my opinion. Or do you guys still?
I think we should work through.
I think we go to the second one.
At least go to the second one.
Yeah, the second one seems pretty straightforward to me, and then we can, we can dive off into the stuff that's more.
Okay.
So I think they're interrelated, but happy to address it however. That's fine.
You're boss.
Jeff, your comment, because obviously, you're, well, I would assume your decision on number two is impacted by number three. So that's where I see it being interrelated.
Yes and no. Okay, so I'll just talk about the fiscal emergency. We, you know, we are in a very different place tonight than we were even on Monday. So, and Tony, thank you for all the work you've put in, you know, all up to now, but also especially this week, because I, I feel much less, I, I felt like, I felt like the fiscal emergency was unavoidable before tonight. After, after this, I actually feel like, I don't feel nearly as, I don't feel the urgency of it nearly as much. I do want to hear other people think about that, but at the moment, I'm not thinking. And then having an option like this lease leaseback would, would, here's what I'm, okay. It is interrelated, yes. So let's just, you know, let's just say that we, we, you know, we do angle towards the town charter, and we actually pursue that, and it, and it becomes, we get that money in 2027, and it starts actually, you know, adding to our reserves. And hopefully, that, that, that helps a lot. I have been worried about these two years in between, like, would we be able to make it through these two years? And this presentation gives me a lot of confidence that, yes, we will be able to make it through these two years, but you know, there are road bumps that we've, you know, there are road bumps we're anticipating, and there's others we're not anticipating. So the fiscal emergency sort of felt like one way to get us through this two year interim. But, but like I said, if we have other options like the lease leaseback, and, and even some, I mean, just the, this budget looks so much better, and the future budgets look better at the moment, that I'm much, I don't strongly feel the need for the fiscal emergency. I don't want to leave it completely off the table, but at the moment, I'm kind of leaning towards saying I don't think it's needed.
Thank you, Jeff. Who would like to go next?
I'm happy to go next. I'm pleased to say I don't think we need to declare a fiscal emergency right now.
I, I, oh, sorry, sorry, Craig.
Whatever word we want.
Not getting out of here without one of us commenting. All right, so I'm really relieved about where we are on the budget and the fact that a balanced budget is within reach. However, I'm looking at the next two years, per Jeff's comment. I'm very worried about them because things happen, because we might find that the level of services that we can afford with that budget are frankly not going to be acceptable, or we have a natural disaster that just comes out of nowhere. And the reserves, while you can question the 60% level, a 26% level is far lower and is still quite risky. So I think we've got to do something. And I am open to anything on the table, but the way I look at it, I don't know enough about this lease leaseback. I am skeptical of the optics of it and possibly the operation of it because we would be putting something, in order to get a valuable amount of money, we'd have to put out there a valuable piece of property owned by the town. And I don't like to be doing that if I, but I'd be open to seeing how it works in more detail if Catherine gets more information. And it might be the prudent way to go forward. But in terms of declaring a fiscal emergency and then having a ballot measure, that's a pretty high risk thing as well, because we have a 50% trigger for passing one, and then a two thirds vote for passing another revenue measure. And the tolerance for revenue enhancement, when we've got the record we got, may not be there. So I do view this as a very valuable tool, and I'd like to understand more, but I, we've got one shot to see if we can get the revenues in the other direction, and I don't know enough today. I'm not prepared with the analysis to say I would pursue that rather than a fiscal emergency in, in some. rather than a fiscal emergency in something on the ballot, which I know I can try for. And one of those might actually be viable. I don't know that both would be.
So one, one comment I wanted to make, and Catherine, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is the fiscal emergency is only required for the UUT. It is not required for the parcel tax.
That's correct.
So when people are considering this, that's an important.
So that's less of a time constraint, but to me, the UUT is the more likely to be approved, if, if anything is.
More likely to be approved, but only, I'll just, in terms of dialogue here. I mean, 350 in revenue, you know, less 120 it didn't cost to put it on the ballot measure, that's 3, 230.
Well, one time fee of 120, if it did pass, then you wouldn't have that fee on a recurring basis. You'd be getting, yes, in the first year, it's not great, but then it starts compounding after that. So I don't know that I know enough to, to choose one over the other right now, because it is high-risk to plan on any revenue being passed. So I think we have to get more information on this. But am I comfortable enough today to say I don't think we need a declaration of fiscal emergency? I'm not myself.
I think one challenge, I just, as we're discussing this, my understanding, given the calendar that we're working up against, we needed to make this decision about pursuing a fiscal emergency or not tonight, or give direction per the agenda.
Tonight would be to give direction. I mean, we have two, two more meetings after this. But that's, you know, if we don't have direction tonight, then we're going to lose two weeks.
So one question I have is, when's our next opportunity to have a ballot, something on the ballot? After March?
This November?
No, I mean, when, these, these windows come up. I mean, why, why March? Why not June? Why not November? I mean, I, I understood why we were picking March for this one, because we were like, we need it as soon as possible.
Correct.
But with this new revised budget and the stuff that you brought, we don't need it as soon as possible.
Right.
We may still need it.
We can defer to the decision for one year.
Yeah, that's, and that's what I was after. So it's, is there another one in November or another one the following March?
In June of 2026?
Correct.
And November, 2026. I am not sure about 2025. These are under state law. March of odd number of years is a, is a,
Oh, wow.
Election year, election date. And I'm looking at Christine and see if you know any information off the top of your head. It's fine if you don't, but I'll just, I'll just check.
I'm on the spot, but I don't believe there is an opportunity until November 2026.
Maybe the, maybe June 2026, because that's the primary.
Primary, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, great, thank you.
And do we know how much, if we gave direction to prepare for, you could decide to go at risk. But I don't know what the cost to get started and then say, yeah, that's not the right route are. Like, what, what are we talking about to be prepared for it in case?
Yeah, so I went back and looked at what legal fees were for the last few ballot measures that I worked on. And I'll just say that the, the special election cost that, that was provided, that I think it was 112,000. My understanding is that is just what the county would charge us. So that wouldn't include legal fees or any consultant in time. In terms of what is typical, 15 to $20,000 in legal fees for a ballot measure. If you do two, I suspect there could be economies of scale. But that's a rough ballpark in terms of just my experience working on ballot measures.
And, and if it were a primary, if we were doing it in June of 2026, then that's already paid for. Like, we, we still have the legal expenses, but they're much lower in terms of our costs from the county.
The, the cost for the county would be much, would be much lower, yeah. It still wouldn't be your regular, your rate, your next regular election is when you elect council members in November of 2026. So June would still be a special election, but my guess is there would be quite a few other measures on that ballot, just to bite up the cost.
So the obvious question is whether we couldn't do both. We can't do the charter city then until November.
Yeah, the charter city's got to be in November.
If we did the, if we did the UUT extension measure in June of 2026, we would not need to declare a fiscal emergency to do that. We'd be, everything would be in order in time for that.
Actually, you would need to declare a fiscal emergency to do the UUT measure in June of 2026. You would not need to declare a fiscal emergency if you did the UUT in November of 2026. So that's a regular municipal election, and the UT is a, is a 50% plus one for the general fund.
Okay, right, okay.
With your comment?
Yeah, yeah, I'm done.
Can I, can I just ask, though, how would, how would you, just, just for clarity? How, how, how would you summarize kind of your perspective? Because there's just a lot of different.
Yeah, I need more information on the lease leaseback. I am skeptical but open-minded about it. I just don't have it tonight. And if the choice, if you're asking me, would I definitely not want to declare a fiscal emergency? The answer is no, because I don't know if this other alternative is there. And I do worry about the next two years. So we've got to do something to, to get our reserves back up. That's my goal. And how we get there, without it being a nail-biter and without it feeling like we're, we're not just kind of existing. I, I wouldn't, I would think declaring a fiscal emergency to have something on the ballot in March, more likely the UUT being possible to pass, definitely not assured to pass. At least I'd feel like we, we tried to do something that's prudent to get, get that income stream up and running sooner rather than later. But if I do have more information on the lease leaseback and more fully understand it, I, I don't like the optics of leasing out town property, but I could, from a business perspective, get convinced of that.
So it sounds like, sorry, it sounds like you would want to give direction to begin preparing for the fiscal emergency declaration tonight, knowing that if the lease leaseback sort of details come back satisfactorily, we might not pursue it in December or November.
Yeah, yeah, based on what I know today, unfortunately.
I could, I could probably agree with that.
Please do.
Great. I, I don't think we need a declaration. I, I think we have multiple options. I don't think we necessarily know which one's going to pan out, but I, I think we would find one. So I would recommend that we not do the, put the time and effort. I think we have a lot of stuff we need to put time and effort into. I'm concerned that, you know, this is just one more, I'll say distraction, that's kind of too strong a word. But I think at this point, given the budget that I've seen, given Tony's proposal, that we start talking about what, what we want starting next year, I'd be much more comfortable going back to the residents and saying, here's why we're asking you to do this, because here are what we believe are the priorities. And we can't do that now. So I'm pretty pessimistic about March in general. So I would say no to the emergency declaration, because basically I'm saying no to UUT in March. Because, and that's the only reason, is I understand it. The only reason we're, we're trying to declare it is so we can have the UUT in March. And since I would be opposed to the UUT in March, then I don't see a need for it. Is that, is that clear?
I love it. Mary.
I think I already said my part on this. I, I, I am a little confused about the UUT, because I, I was relieved to hear we might not need to do the UUT in March. Was my first response, because I thought that that was taking the money away from the Open Space Fund. Is that not true? Yeah, okay, just so I understand, this is, this is, yeah. I'm still clear that I do not think declaring a fiscal emergency now is beneficial for the town.
All right. So I, there's been a lot that has happened over the last two and a half years and, but also now culminating in the last, you know, three to four weeks. And so I wanted to take the opportunity right now just to, to share my thoughts, just to have it on the record. So thanks for indulging me while I read this, comments that I already prepared. We're benefiting from the renewed energy on the finance committee at a time when we have strong leadership in the finance department. I want to thank both the finance committee and the finance director, Tony. I appreciate the excellent research and analysis done over the last three months by the committee to provide their October 15 summary report. We all understand there's a delta between revenue and expense growth, and I appreciate the collective desire to be at break even this year. But it's also important to understand why expenses have outpaced revenue and the reality of what break even looks like in terms of service to the community and to staff recruitment and retention at Town Hall. There are many reasons we find ourselves with deficit spending. At the highest level, we are impacted by increased costs as a result of the new sheriff's contract, increased cost as a result of the housing element, and the very real cost of significant town staff turnover. As it relates to staff turnover, this can at least be partially attributed to a small contingent of community members that have been resisted to any housing solutions, up to the point of threatening litigation against the town. In my opinion, staffing has been a root cause issue. I'd like to break these issues down further. When our five-year San Mateo County's contract ended, we were faced with a 57% increase in the new contract. Thanks to a negotiation by our prior town manager, 1 million of this increase has been credited back by the county over two years. But we still have incurred an incremental 1 million cost since fiscal year 21, 22. This will jump to the full $2.3 million annual fee, or $600,000 over where we are this current year, starting with the 26, 27 budget. At that point, the cost will have doubled in over a five, in a, in a five-year period. Since 2021, we've had 59 public meetings, over 180 hours of public meetings on the housing element. And despite this, some community members still claim lack of transparency and the need for more meetings. Meetings are a significant cost. Looking closer, we held 24 of those meetings, or 40% on the housing element issues after January 2023. Around the same time, our housing element, in my opinion, was well positioned to be accepted by HCD. If we had submitted the housing element in winter 2023, we could have started working on the zoning sooner and hit the 20, January 24 zoning deadline from HCD. Instead, we missed the zoning deadline and we were decertified. All of this world has added yet more cost in addition to increased scrutiny by HCD. We also held 20 closed sessions during the 19 months between February 2023 and September 24. 15 were related to, to turnover and town manager and town attorney roles. And five were, were a result of the PS4 PBN threatened litigation. Each turnover added cost. The attorney's fees for the threatened litigation alone was $75,000. Altogether, the incremental meetings on housing, staff turnover and litigation have cost the town, based on my conservative estimate, which I'm open to dispute, is $550,000. And then the enormous opportunity cost of working on other things over the last nearly 20 months. Add to this the incremental $1 million in cost from the sheriff's contract, and this represents 1.5 million dollars in costs over the last two and a half years, which equates to 20% of the bonus of the budget that Tony presented tonight. If that revenue was still in our fund balance, I believe we would be looking at a balance closer to 3.4 million or a reserve of 46%, something we could use to manage through to a 2026 ballot measure. Looking forward to solutions, we need to find ways to cut expenses, as we talked about tonight, and find more revenue. As we've reviewed tonight, getting to this balanced budget, especially as it relates to the salary savings, will impact town services. As we make these decisions, we need to be firm on priorities for the remaining staff to protect from more burnout, more turnover, and set expectations with the community on things like office hours, response time, delays in the planning and building department. On the revenue side, the most interesting option to me is a real estate transfer tax. The benefits are an annual recurring 1 to 2 million in revenue, based on a tax that impacts only new home buyers. This approach gives us time to get our audits done before a ballot measure and would not require a declaration of fiscal emergency. The downside is the incremental revenue would be three, three years away, as we've just been discussing in the last few moments. I think the recent addition of the potential lease leaseback deal is very interesting. And I appreciate that this all happened late this afternoon and everybody's hearing it for the first time. I do think that this is something that could potentially be a viable solution to give us a bridge until we get to 2027. For this reason, I agree with the statement that I think there are other options, as we've seen tonight, just in the last week, that can, together with potentially the lease leaseback, could buy us the time and avoid calling a fiscal emergency. So I also don't support a fiscal emergency. I'll add that, again, that only gives us 200 and, what is it? $30,000 net of the cost. And I think we'll have other solutions. I appreciate Judith's comment that that's just the baseline for the first year, and it'll go up from there. But I think by the following year, we'll have other solutions. Looking longer term, another idea is I think we should explore creative ideas to say, for instance, I think we could explore shared services for functions like planning, shared services with Woodside, potentially things like planning and building, Public Works Communications. I'm sure there are at least a few that might make sense. Another idea, although it would come with lots of debate, would be the potential for a merger. This, again, is a very long-term, is a long-term idea, but no doubt would serve both communities well from a wildfire mitigation standpoint, including savings to Woodside Fire. So these are complex issues, and I wanted to bring awareness to the full picture for all the reasons why we are where we are. Working together, I'm confident we'll have a path forward. So thank you for indulging me with those previously prepared comments. I just would recap to say, I think we have other possibilities, so would not be in favor of declaring a fiscal emergency.
Are we, are we still in discussion?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Well, I think that was, I think the latter comments were everything. So I do feel the need to respond that I don't find it helpful to go back and look at who said what, when, to get us here. And there's a lot of attribution of blame there as far as people objecting to approaches. I have, I know very well how much time and effort the town's put in. And people have strong and different views in this town. So I, I think we want to focus on going forward and not setting expectations. Like, if I take what you're saying to the extreme, people shouldn't say what they feel in meetings and, and suggest alternative approaches, and that's not at all our town's history. So I agree, we have options going forward. I would have liked, if there was a leaseback, lease leaseback option, to have more information about it, if it was known yesterday, so that I could actually come in this afternoon. Okay, well, that's fair. But I feel that we are not really in a place to evaluate that right now. Which, and just to wrap up, the reason that I was proposing to be prepared for a ballot measure is because I don't, placing all our eggs in that one basket as the solution doesn't seem wise when we don't really know much about it. I'm very open to it, though, should it play out, that that's something that makes a lot of sense. So I, I want this to be solved, and it, it would be great to avoid a declaration of fiscal emergency. But I, I want this town to continue to be viable at the same time. And based on where I am today, I don't see a basis for putting that to the side. It's not something I want. It's not something I want, and it is a tool, from my perspective, to open up an avenue to a potential solution. So that's just putting more color on, on what I'm, why I'm still open to a declaration of fiscal emergency. I hear others have different views and I'm in the minority, but it's important for me to explain where I'm coming from.
So Tony, could you go back to the forecast where the very first forecast you had already didn't include any of these? Yeah, but don't, wasn't there a forecast, the same kind of forecast, isn't there a forecast without the UUT? Did you have that? Yeah, this is the fiscal forecast, right? This is just no new revenue measured, this is just, and we're basically, we're, our expenses are crossing out in 2829. So, I mean, that's, for me, the reason I'm willing to forego the financial emergency right now is we're still talking 2829 based on the stuff that Tony's done. I feel like that gives us enough time, if we had to do something in 2026, because we were like, oh, you know, these other, the Charter City or whatever isn't panning out, we still have an opportunity. So that, that was my thinking, is that we don't need to do it today. It's not that we don't need to be mindful, because I'm with you on that, we need to be mindful. It just, before, this graph would have looked very different after my conversation with Tony, like, a week ago. Like, we would have, these curves would have crossed much sooner, and the black line there would have, was going down in like 2728, right, to zero or negative. So this is a very different, and then the other thing I would add is the reserves. I'm, I'm looking forward to recommendations from the Finance Committee. But, I mean, I've sat through those and you guys have listened in, and, you know, the Finance Committee's, for the most part, I think, thinks that 60% is significantly too high and that we can reduce that. So I, I'm actually not as uncomfortable, I mean, sure, it'd be great to bring it up, but I don't think we need to bring it up anywhere near where the blue line is as well. So that's another piece that makes me feel some comfort.
Yeah, and I, I remember we spoke about the 60% level last year, the year before, and, and pressure tested that. And one of the reasons was because a small swing in a development on an expenditure in town can really impact our relatively modest budget. But 60%, I'm not sure that's the right level either, so there's room there. But I, in the spirit of fiscal discipline, I would rather be working towards something that we agree on at the right level, rather than saying, well, it just doesn't have to be 60, so I, I assume that conversation will come.
Yeah, with the Finance Committee involved.
So just listen to this discussion and the math and realizing that we could, we could easily spend $200,000 between now and March on a ballot measure that would bring in, you know, $230,000 next year and maybe $230,000 the following year. And, and it's reminding me that that's just, it feels, I mean, having thought about, having thought that through, it just feels less worth it to me. So I, I think I'm more, I don't think I feel the need for the fiscal emergency either.
Mary?
She's already said.
I already said.
Oh, I missed it, I'm sorry.
She was no.
She was no, yeah, no, you're right, I heard that, okay. So it seems like we have four, four no.
Yeah, and mine was only, I would like to prepare for a fiscal emergency declaration by spending a modest at risk until I know more about the lease leaseback. I'm not saying I would never doubt that.
Right, right. But given we need to give, and I totally appreciate that. But, and I would likely agree with you if we had time, but we don't have time, and we need to give direction tonight in order for this to stack up. And I, I also, just to reiterate, have confidence, as Craig said, per this chart and the time we have to address this. So I would not be in favor of fiscal emergency. And that would give us four, in terms of direction, four out of the five council members saying no.
The last caveat on why, and I'm not, I, I hear you, I'm not going to argue it, but it is, things have been moving so quickly in the last month or two, to, to your, you know, great merit, but to my increasing consternation that I'm not sure which way is up. And so there is a little bit of, if we had more time and we don't, my confidence might grow, but where I am right now, precluding a degree of freedom on a potential solution should something else turn up, it, you know, would have been prudent. But I hear you, I'm not, I'm not trying to press that and convince you otherwise.
Okay, do, yes, please.
So I'll, I'll go first, just so I get my word in, and then you guys can take off from there. I, I think it's worth investigating. I mean, I, I think we should start that investigation. Maybe we ramp it up, but, you know, it, it definitely feels like something, if we can make work, that, that, that would give us the cushion that we need. I mean, again, if you go back to your forecast with, I think one of your forecasts had that in it, right? So, I mean, this one here, I mean, you know, we see the reserve going up, which is great. We see expenses exceeding, I mean, sorry, revenues exceeding expenses. And this would potentially give us room then to expand services, you know, to open up Town Center for, you know, like, five days a week, what a concept. And, you know, more than just the morning. So I, I think this is a great opportunity for us to look at this. What I don't know is how we, you know, I always think about these problems is you kind of do a high-level view to sort of make sure that, you know, it's kind of, this does look sane and reasonable, and then you start digging in. So I don't want to just dive right to the bottom of this and spend as much money as possible. But I don't think it's going to take very much, we, we know other towns that have become charter towns. So I think the first thing is just to go and sort of get their use cases, so we can see what it looked like, kind of roughly what it cost them, that'll at least give us ballpark. And then if we have a council meeting and that all looks reasonable, then I would say we go more sort of full-throated in, you know, spending money to actually pursue it. Thank you.
Yeah, I would explore it. There, since it's so far away, when we have to put this on the, or can put it on the ballot, other things might turn up, but we aren't a city right now that has a hotel to put a transient tax on or, or some of the other measures are significant to evaluate. This looks pretty straightforward, and the work that's been done quantifies it. So I definitely would look into it. We should think about when to spend money and time on it, because it is a little bit far off. But it seems like something to evaluate. The only concern will be it's a tax, and, you know, how are people going to feel about that? But it's two years away, so I would put it in the mix, focus on it, it seems relatively straightforward. So I'm, I'm in favor.
Jeff?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm very optimistic about the, the, the real, the transfer tax. I mean, you know, honestly, that, you know, the trend is, I mean, it's been there for years and it's unmistakable. Our expenses are going to outpace our revenues, barring, barring a change. And this feels, it's hard for me to imagine the town not, you know, being able to be viable. If we don't do this in five years, something else significant needs to change for us to be viable. So I, I'm all for, I mean, you know, cautiously and just, I mean, not going all in on it tomorrow, but I, I definitely think we should be thinking about this as, as a measure, as something we approve in November of 2026.
Mary?
Well, I don't want to get too long-winded on this subject, but as you all know, I've been talking about charter towns and charter cities for four years now. And I feel some guilt to have missed this election for bringing it forward because of having tried to do the, try to look at our own current structure as careful as I could with everybody and to have everybody, that anybody and everybody who knew anything about charter cities come talk to the, our group. And, you know, had, thought I had done my homework pretty well on charter cities. So it was clear for me, to me from the very beginning, that this was going to be our financial solution. And I also thought it was something that our founding fathers believed in, but just didn't have the bandwidth to do when they originally started. And I think it's going to be helpful to look at it and understand it fully. I can see some, so anyway, the short answer is obviously I am in complete support of looking into the charter city, charter town. And I, I think it's going to benefit the town in many ways and prepare it for what Jeff sees as sort of its new, new world. I think that there's going to be many opportunities around partnerships and learning more about, about this. And, and resources that will support us in getting this done. And I'm obviously very excited about it as, as, as a game changer for the town of Portola Valley.
Well, I, as I already said, am in favor of, of this. In addition to, you know, firstly, I, I just think even if we're able to achieve this graph in the latter years, I don't think this assumes, as, as Craig mentioned, you know, expanded services, which we're going to need. It doesn't reflect backfilling our reserve to get us back to the reserve policy. As mentioned, expenses are only going to go up, including from the Sheriff's Department. And I don't believe, you know, as, as has been discussed, no capital improvements is not realistic. So for all of those reasons, I, I think we're going to need this regardless. I also like it because it affects home buyers only versus all parcels, like a parcel tax or even a UUT. I also think we're going to be well-positioned for this, because by the time it happens, our audits will be done. And so that will help with the ballot measure. Regarding the type, I wanted to just, we'll learn more about this over, you know, the coming weeks, months, years. My understanding is St. Helena did a measure like this for the exclusive purpose of getting the real estate transfer tax. I've heard it referenced as Charter Lite, I don't know if that's a real term or not. But I just want to put it out there that what they effectively did is kept everything, and, and Catherine, please chime in, because I knew you'll represent this much better, kept everything about governance the same and only added the real estate transfer tax.
Yes, that's also my understanding of the St. Helena approach.
So to be clear, that's the approach that, as of, based on what I know right now, would be advocating. But that will be a decision for others to make when I no longer am counsel. So, yeah, and I just want to say, you know, I do think how we got here is relevant. There's been a lot said in the committee, in the community, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to share some of that background. I in no way said no community feedback. Obviously, community feedback's essential, and we've done a lot of it. I was only making the point that there's a correlation between meetings and cost, and so that has been a contributor. All right, so do you have your direction on charter cities?
Yes.
All right. Was there your last bubble?
Anything, are there other options to consider, but you brought the?
So in terms of exploring, at least finding more information about the lease leaseback, what, I think, I think we should continue those, I think, what, what do you suggest in terms of the process?
I, I was going to suggest bringing forward some discussion in the November 14th, sorry, November 13th item. I'm not sure if this was with the budget or a separate, just informational item that perhaps, you know, staff could collaborate with. I, I was a part of this discussion with Mike Caligree, so bring forward information about that. Also, in terms of the county's templates for lease leaseback documents, I have those. So I could bring those forward with that item as well on the 13th.
It would also be helpful to understand logistics and timing for what's involved.
Yes, agreed.
Okay, so, so for the November 13th meeting, we're going to have, you're going to be bringing forward the budget for approval. And then as a separate agenda item, will be a discussion on what you've learned.
Yes, that would be my suggestion.
That work? All right, one more item on the budget, I forgot a note here that I'm also in favor of the recommendation to explore the UUT telephone code language. I think we would all agree with that. So whatever incremental revenue will be there. All right.
Does that have to go through a vote? Was, was that part of the UUT ballot measure? We can't just, we can't just change it.
To update the UUT for telephone ordinance would require a vote.
Of the council, though, right?
No.
But this is, this is not, and it's not mission critical, this is, but it is, it is something that I would recommend the town consider, because the language is a dinosaur.
But that would require the fiscal emergency.
No.
Oh.
No.
It would be next year?
This could be done on a regular election, and, yeah, but it's, it's something that is needed, yeah.
So meaning, because we do it later, November?
Right, but it's, it's, the only, the only risk is if, you know, companies, they just see UUT. Like, yeah, they, I mean, it's standard operating procedure. But if somebody actually really read our ordinance, they could make an argument that they don't have to pay it, because the language in it is outdated. So, and then they say, well, we don't have that anymore, we have this, therefore we're, we don't have to pay the UUT. That's the only risk, but I don't think that's going to be an issue for such a small town. You just see UUT telephone and they pay it. But to, just to safeguard the town, we should consider updating the ordinance with modern language.
And now the first time that we could do that is a year from now, without a special election? Okay. Can we, November 2026?
November 2026.
Okay. Are you calendaring that far out?
All right, can?
The other options, we're still working on other options, I hope?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think there are a couple of other things that I had thought that we should get back to the Finance Committee about looking at, and among them were, were looking more closely at the, at understanding the charter city for one thing. But also the sharing of, of resources with Woodside, if you mentioned. But also other possibilities would include merger or with, say, Ladera's commercial section, that whether you could do an annex there, what, what the dollars and cents of that would be, what the time course would that, of that would be, who, who we talk to about that. I think you go directly to Ray Mueller, who you now have a good relationship with, but, or, or Mike. But just to get more information about that, I'm just talking about getting information. And I think the council could do a little work on that. And, but most particularly, I think it would be wonderful if the Finance Committee would do it, because they're the ones who are good with numbers.
I think annexation was one of the important.
But I think we need the numbers to go with it somehow, and, and, and we're not going to give you any more work, because you've done too much already. So we, they could, we could hopefully get them to do some work on that, and us too, in terms of reaching out.
Sorry, any other brainstorming on other solutions? Jeff? No, okay, everybody's nodding their head. No, so, no, all good. So I think we can close this item? Yes? Okay, thank you very, very much, Tony. I believe I speak for all of us where, you know, kudos and we really appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
And to the finance committee. All right, let's move.
Go home.
Go home.
You're dismissed.
Moving on, item number seven, council subcommittee liaison committee and regional reports. Does anybody have a committee update that they'd like to share?
You want to jump in? Yeah, Mary and I are on two subcommittees. One is to select members of an ad hoc site evaluation committee for the post adoption plan to look at alternative sites to join people or field. We have two more applicants to interview. I think it's two. But whatever, we have a couple more. And then we're going to wrap that up and bring back a recommendation. However, one, one question I have, maybe you're already ahead of this, is the ASCC and the planning commission need to appoint their own representative, right?
Yes, I believe Terrence had agendized that and he has. He does have the primary, I'm sorry, and the alternate, so I'll make sure you guys have that information.
Please pass that on. Yeah, okay, that's good.
Are you gonna, we're gonna hear who they are?
Okay.
Yeah, that was on their agendas this past week. Oh, I thought they selected.
They, they did select.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make.
Yeah, I do.
Yes, I'll make sure we get that information for.
Thank you, Mary.
It was in the meeting. I mean, my understanding, it's in the meeting, right? It was in the public meeting, that selection.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Ronnie from the planning commission and Dana from the ASCC.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't know about the alternates.
Rebecca is one of the alternates.
Oh, I see. And the planet, and the, and we don't know what the other one is.
All right, that's helpful. And then the process of selecting a recruiting firm for an interim town manager because Cory is available to serve until the end of the year roughly. And we are looking to remind the public for an interim because we need a quicker solution than a full recruitment of a permanent town manager is likely to, to occur, given the holidays. So we have interviewed a selection of recruiting firms, also other resources that are like bulletin boards. So we're, we're gonna summarize that and bring that forward. The 30th is our current plan. So that's where we are. We have one more set of information that is late breaking. So there's a little, there's one variable out there that we'll have to circle back in terms of timing to prepare the packet, but.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And I guess I'm just thinking, so that would be October, just thinking out loud about the timeline, October 30th to select a search firm for the interim. We would be in quick, quick order. I'm assuming that your questions include their availability and how quickly they can place, find somebody because basically we're going to be at the holidays, you know, five, five weeks later. Thank you. Also, I, there was a meeting of the Hawthorns Ad Hoc Group. I'm now refused on mid pen. And so Judith attended that meeting on my behalf.
It was on Monday. And just the brief update, the mid pen summarized for the POG, the Public Access Working Group within, is that the right title for the local one? The, the current top candidates for the location of a parking lot and current thoughts on a couple of the trails that connect up to currently existing town trails. And a lot of public input was had, both in person and online. So they are going to come and present next week to the town council. Likely a very similar presentation, but one where it's not a decision making role that we have on this, it's to receive their current status of their proposed approach. It's going to be a long and convoluted process because they then go to their board. Then it's going to come back around for any additional permits the town might need to grant in some subsequent iteration of, of meetings. So this is to receive their current refined summary of their approach. So do attend if you're interested in that, the 30th.
Well, I was a big investor in Cal Cities. And spent four days down there and I thought it was really important. It, it was a great opportunity for me to understand that we're not the only ones who are having these problems. And, and relationships are the basis of almost everything and cohesion and consensus is all important. So, and recognizing of different points of view as well and not letting it get inside your head. That was my thing, real takeaway for me was don't let the voices get inside your head. And I, I learned a lot. I think it was a great opportunity to meet a lot of managers and understand a lot more about structures of towns. As well as some very concrete things like about how many, I think, how many towns have their own police departments? And how many towns take much more responsibility for their infrastructures than we do. So we've had very limited, we have really quite limited functionality as a town. And I have, I'll do it more in writing and see if I can get you more substantive information. Again, the charter city was widely discussed as it had been the last three times I've been. And I looked really deeply into it each of those times and felt that it was sort of a no brainer that we were just not getting to. So that was my biggest thing. I, I don't, I've lost my agenda and so I'm not looking at my conservation met. And I have an official report in from conservation. And other than that, I had a question, which is who is the liaison to ASCC? I hope it's not me, is all I can say.
Oh, I think it's me. I think I was, I think I'm the liaison for the last, I forgot the quarter changed.
Okay, okay, good. I just didn't want it to be me. And, and they're missing you.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Most of mine are in writing.
Thank you, thank you, Mary. Any, any others? All right, I'd like to take public comment on the subcommittee and committee, I'm sorry, regional agency updates. One hand raised on Zoom, Kristy?
No comments on that, but the lease leaseback was announced after the public comment. So the public was unable to give any response or any questions. One of my questions on that would be, is there any other options that the county could offer? And if so, what are they? And then obviously a deep dive into what is lease leaseback really mean? To me, we always keep properties, so this is a public property. So the public really wants to understand what this means. Thank you.
I'll respond to that just because I know this is a new topic and we're all kind of learning real time. This was when I described our situation and asked kind of broadly what the county could do to help. They reminded me of the credit that was given for the sheriff's contract indicated that that will not be able to continued. They said a loan wouldn't be possible, but as Catherine suggested, the lease leaseback is a, I don't know if it's a standard, but something that is regularly done. And so that was what was offered. And I think we all have a lot more to learn about that, so the community can learn as we all do. All right, any other hands in the schoolhouse? I don't see any hands raised on Zoom, so I will close the council subcommittee liaison committee and regional agency report and motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.